But it is 5:30.
That's good.
And we have a long agenda, so I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome, it's Tuesday, December 14th, and we are doing the county council's December regular session. It looks like most of us are here, so let's go ahead and get a call of a call role essentially, make sure we're all present. Councillor Deckard.
Here.
Councillor Iverson.
Here.
Councillor Munson.
Here.
Councillor Hawke.
That's here.
Councillor McKim.
Here.
And that is all of us for the time being, since councillor Spoonmore is councillor no more. The next item on our agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance, so let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. That works better when we're in person. Probably not the only thing that works better when we're in person.
I can't get off when we do that. If I could see the flag and.
Yeah. Next on the agenda is public comment for items that are not listed on our agenda. We typically have a time limit if there are comments, depending on how many there are. It looks like there's a hand raised. Mr. Shelton.
Good evening, councillor. Jim Shelton attended the meeting on behalf of the chamber, but speaking right now on behalf of court appointed special advocates, a casa. As the year is coming to an end, I want to make the public aware of what the training schedule is for next year. The winter session will start February 2nd, so not very long from now, applications will be due. And then first of June and then early September, there will be two other sessions. The last word we heard from the Casa program, we need, we have 25 children who do not have a Casa. In fact, the director asked us to consider, those of us who are down to a second, a single case, to consider taking on a second one, which I'm sure some of us will think about after the holidays. The Casa is the person who's a volunteer, who's been trained by the program, and their job is to help Judge Harvey and Judge Galvin be aware of what is going on in the life of the child that's been removed from their parents because their parents have been abusing or neglected them. Their job is not to fix things, it's to make the court aware of how the kids are doing, or kid or kids, what kind of services they're getting, maybe do they need some others? And then how are the mom and dad doing, complying with directions they've been given to get themselves prepared to have reunification with their children? It's a very satisfying thing, it can sometimes be hard. But in the end, when the children are reunited with their parents or adopted, and I had a case in in the middle of November where the children were reunited, or the little guy was reunited with his parents after some three years, he was four and a half, and it was a very joyous occasion, and I look forward to wishing them a happy holiday together as a family. So please think about that. As I said, the next training will then be starting February 2nd. It'll last through the 28th. Applications will be due in the middle of January, so if you need to get more information, now would be the time to do it before we get totally buried in the holidays. You can call 333-2272 and talk to the staff. Or go to Monroe County Casa.org, click on the volunteer link and get other details. So thanks for the opportunity to share that information with the public and happy holidays.
Thank you. Happy holidays to you as well, Mr. Shelton. Are there any other members of the public who wish to make comment? I see none. So that brings us to the adoption of our lengthy agenda. Does anyone wish to add or remove or edit items on our agenda for tonight? Michelle.
Good evening, councillor. I just want to make a request, if possible, if the agenda could be amended. First off, the commissioner submitted the township trustee interlocal agreement after the agenda and packet was passed out. And I was out on that day and didn't get it until I got back on Monday. So if you would like to consider that tonight, that would be, what they're wanting to do is to change the amount to not to exceed 25,000 to a not to exceed 50,000. And I would request that you add that as item 16B, and then then change 16B to 16C, if that is permissible.
Do we have any objections to adding that item? Okay, that sounds good. Was there anything else, Michelle?
Yes, I had one more item. We just discovered in some recent payroll change forms that the prosecutor's office has a need to move an employee from the stop grant to the general fund. And that's due to the depletion of the stop grant funds. And we've done this in the past for the last two or three years, whereas that grant goes in, you know, gets depleted, we move that person for two or three payrolls into the general fund just until the new funding kicks in because the grant doesn't supply enough for the entire year. So I'm requesting, excuse me, that the account line 13425 be added to the agenda or so that we can discuss this. Sorry, I'm ahead of myself. If we could amend and add item 17D as a salary ordinance amendment to be able to add a 2021 and a 2022 salary ordinance amendment for the prosecutor's office.
And that's going under 17?
Yes, item 17D.
Okay.
Dog.
Okay. Does anyone have any objections to adding that agenda item? Do any council members have any other items to add, subtract, edit? Okay, with that, then I believe I can just approve the agenda. Consider it approved. And I'm scrolling all over the place on this agenda here. Do I need to have a roll call vote on the agenda, Tim?
We've done it in the past.
Yes, it's a change.
Okay, since we've added things, let's go ahead and have a roll call vote then.
Thank you.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Councillor McKim?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. That brings us to item five, department updates. I don't have anything on the agenda for department updates, but are there any department heads here who would like to speak at this time?
Yes, ma'am, this is the assessor. Hi.
Welcome.
Oh yeah, there I am. It's finding me on the screen. Yes, thank you all very much. I just wanted to bring you all up to date. I know there's been some conversation the last week or so about my level two and level three pay. And I just want to assure you all that I'm here for any questions, if you have any concerns and questions. But I'd also think it might be a good idea to meet next week during the work session and where I've got more data to show you if you have any questions. Not sure if you really do or not, but I just wanted to be right out there with you guys. It's important because we only have one one more chance. And of course, my pay is, as an elected official, has to be set, which you all know, before the end of the year. And if it's not, then nothing gets passed. So does anybody have any questions? I know there's been some concerns and some conversation. And I think Marty's on here and she could speak up a little bit also. She's my liaison.
Councillor Hawke.
Yes, I would like to ask that the letter from Courtney Schasman, I've never pronounced the lady's name right. She was the commissioner over department local government finance. When she sent that information to us back years ago stating how this was to be paid, and it was very clear, you reached your level two, you got paid for that, and when you reach your level three, you get paid for not only just your level two that you had accomplished, but then you got the level three. So it really was the three on top of the two. And that's, and we have a copy of that letter, which I would ask the assessor to send out to everyone on the council so that they can read it. If you have any questions, you can call the assessor, you can call me, whatever. I don't know, we can still call Courtney. I don't even know where she works now. But she was great person with a lot of knowledge, and she was the one that directed us how we were to address this. Now, this was before, then they raised the amount that you could pay, but it was still the same rule that you paid so much for level two, and you paid so much for level three, and there's no further levels. What I would also like to request the council to consider is that we advocate for all of the departments to try to go to the state to get the same kind of direction from the state that would give additional compensation for required education. I think we should all be required to have a certain amount of education tied just to the office that we represent.
I would echo that, and I have in many, many times at the State House, you know that this, this is law, that the legislators actually did this to the assessing community back in, I don't know, early 2000s because of all of the issues that they'd had with reassessment over the years and going to market value. And the legislators, as every year, when the legislators come in, it seems like the assessors are are the main issue because taxpayers can really call their legislators and complain about their assessors. And so the way they've dealt with this over the years are to create more and more rules and regulations and laws for the assessing community. And of course, the big one was a mandating that we, we have to hold this certification. The assessor themselves, be it a county assessor, and then there's, I think there's about eight, seven or eight township assessors left in the state, all up north. We all fall under it where we have to have, be able to hold our office be a level three. You don't have to have it now. They changed that rule a couple of years ago. It used to be you couldn't even run without the level three. You now have to be seated if you're not a level, if you are not an incumbent, but someone running. To be seated, you have to have the level two before January. However, then if you have that level two, you would have the rest of the first term to get your level three. If you do not get your level three, you cannot run again for office and you will lose your job and someone else will come in. So it's, it's, it's basically written in blood, guys. It's no ifs, ands, or buts. On that level three, who falls under that is my chief deputy, who you all know is basically has all of the responsibilities, the rights and everything else as the assessor. So your, your chief deputies have to have the level three. And then it goes on to say that anyone that is handling, doing valuations in the office must, shall also have the level three. That means anyone that makes decisions, independent decisions, and puts value on property. And that's what you want. But so we can talk about this. I know you have a huge evening ahead of you guys. And, but I wanted just to bring to you, to share that I've been working with my liaison, working with the, with Margie Rice. And I've got all the paperwork to show you everything. I will tomorrow morning. I believe I sent this to you guys a while back ago, but I know you get so much, so much. We'll send it again to you all. I sent it to Marty this afternoon. She'd already had it for me, but she went to, she went through it again and assured me that, yes, everything was exactly like it was supposed to be. So anyway, any questions?
I don't, I don't have any questions. We'll definitely take this up at the work session.
Thank you.
And look forward to getting some more information before we can get into it. Just want to make sure I've seen a couple of emails, but I definitely want to take a look at, at what you're presenting before we get too much further into it.
Fair enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other departments wanting to provide an update? Or speak to the council? Okay. Seeing none there. Let's move to council liaison updates. Are there any liaison updates from members of council? Everybody is so ready to get into the agenda. Okay. Let's move to item seven. And tonight, we're holding the public hearing and vote on the final approval for the tax abatement for Baxter Pharmaceutical Solutions LLC. I'd like to open the public hearing portion right now and invite Jeff Cockrell, our legal counsel in charge of all things tax abatement-like to give us a, an update and also a brief reminder for us and the public of how this process works. Mr. Cockrell.
Yes, this is the second step of a, of a two-step process because we had to get a, this is designating an economic revitalization area as well as approving a tax abatement. An economic revitalization area is required in order for a tax abatement to be approved. Occasionally, we get abatements in areas that have already been declared an economic revitalization area. But this is not, this is not one of those. It had been at previous times in the past. But then we expire ours after five years, so that's been over five years since, since the last one had occurred. This is a request from Baxter to add up to $40 million worth of new personal property equipment. They're looking at citing some on both of their campuses with the majority being at their, I believe Curry Pike facility, which is in, the one that is not in the West Side Tiff, but is south of that. They're going to create at least 18 new jobs with a pay of at least $18 per hour and have benefits, medical and dental benefits with an hourly cost of over $7 per hour. So this is, we went through this quite thoroughly last, last month. I don't know if you have any further questions. I do know Brad Zimmer from, that represents Baxter is also on this, so maybe he can ask, answer any questions you do have. This has gone through the Economic Development Commission and received a positive recommendation. There was some questions about a chemical which have been resolved in that this company does not use that chemical in their Monroe County facilities. Probably not anywhere, but we asked it specifically about their Monroe County facilities.
Thanks. Council, do we have any questions or comments about this item? Councillor McKim.
Yes, only just that I would invite Mr. Zimmer to describe briefly the project to the public.
That would be great.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Welcome. Yeah, this project is basically, it's a high fill vitalization line. And what that means is, is Baxter manufactures molecules and injectables for other people. And so they produce vials and syringes that have been pre-filled. So this is basically high-speed lines. And just one point of correction, actually, the estimate's going to be for 25 new jobs and not 18 at the Van Buren location. So, but then, then some of the other equipment is also for the packaging and the handling that's going to result from the increased volume of production on the vials and the cartridges and the syringes.
Great. Councillor McKim.
So just to give us an idea, that's exciting, and I'm glad you're making this kind of investment. What, what kind of velocity are we talking? I mean, how many, how many vials an hour?
Oh boy. Well, let me check my notes here in front of me. I think one of the lines is something like 6,000 fills per hour. And I can't remember if that's for the syringes or the vials or the cartridges. And then another fill line, which probably uses a different type of delivery device is, I think, another 4,000 fills per hour. So it will, it will increase their output. And on one of the lines in Van Buren, it's going to, that's the one where the 25 jobs will be created. And then the line that's going in, in Richland Township on Daniel's Way, that is basically replacing a line that had had a tax abatement on it. That abatement had aged off, and basically the equipment has outlived its useful life. So they're replacing equipment there, and the people that run it, there's 20 people on that line. So there'll be 20 jobs retained in Richland Township on that fill line, basically for replacing equipment that had been there and is basically, its useful life is over.
And I don't know if this is helpful, but I looked at the, what the application that they gave, and it seemed that one of the new high-speed filling lines is capable of filling up to 36,000 syringes per hour. And the, a second one is capable of packaging up to 24,000 syringes per hour.
Right, I think, I think the other numbers were on the old equipment that was there. So it just sort of shows how vastly, you know, how much quicker and how much more the fill lines are going to be.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments for Mr. Zimmer or Mr. Cockrell? Mr. Iverson?
Yeah, Mr. Zimmer, thank you for being here. I really appreciate everything that Baxter does for the community. And one of the things that you noted in your application was that a vast majority, or I should say, a majority of the employees do come from Monroe County, and you do as much as you can to hire folks regionally. Can you talk more about that and how these 25 jobs will come into being?
Yeah, basically currently, right now, 53% of all the employees at the work side, they have over 200 employees total, are from Monroe County. And basically, my client's biggest concern on this project is filling those jobs. So, and as much as they want to commit to Monroe County for those jobs, I mean, they're basically, they're going to be looking to hire anywhere. So I know that was, that was their main concern was just filling those 25 jobs at this facility. But I know they, they use, you know, I think they've got a billboard up, and they use local advertising. And they're going to be using all the channels, and they're really ramping up into high gear because that's their, that's their biggest priority is getting these positions filled. We're not really in a position to guarantee how many of those are going to be from Monroe County, but hopefully it'll fall in line kind of with the general, you know, overall, that number's been 53%.
Well, of course, and these are great jobs for the region, so I thank you for that information.
Thank you.
Councillor Hawke.
Yes, just to add to that, my neighbor is supposed to start there either this week or next. And so, yes, they are hiring locally for certain, and we thank you for that opportunity for him.
Any other comments or questions from council? I would like to open the floor for public comment. And we will limit comments to 30 seconds. And, oh, not 30 seconds, three minutes, sorry. Are there any, oh, there's one public comment. So if you could, please, before you make your comments, state your name for the record. And then you'll have three minutes and TSD will alert you when there's 30 seconds left. Welcome, Eric Spoonmore, member of the public. Is Eric able to speak to us?
I have another question.
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Well.
Okay.
I'm sure you all figured it wouldn't be too long before I'd be back, but I'm glad to be here in support of this particular item tonight. So Eric Spoonmore, Greater Bloomington Chamber of Commerce. And yes, we absolutely fully support this. And I think it's a terrific investment in economic development. County love to hear about these new jobs. So hope you all will support it as well, too. Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Spoonmore. Do we have any other members of the public wanting to make comment? If we have no further comments, the public hearing for Baxter Pharmaceutical Solutions LLC tax abatement is now closed. Councillor Deckard, will you please continue with the next step in this process?
Thank you. Council, I move to approve resolution 2021-59B, Part Two, Approval Tax Abatement for Baxter Pharmaceutical Solutions LLC.
Second.
Are there council comments on the vote? On the resolution? Yes, Mr. McKim.
Only just that I also want to thank our Economic Development Commission for the, their citizen members for the time that they put into doing the much more detailed review of this and all tax abatement applications. We appreciate your expertise and effort.
I'll certainly second that. Any other comments or questions from council? Public comments on our resolution? May I have a roll call vote, please?
Councillor Hawke?
Yes.
Councillor Deckard?
Yes.
Councillor Iverson?
Yes.
Councillor Wiltz?
Yes.
Councillor McKim?
Yes.
Councillor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Zimmer. Thank you, Mr. Cockrell.
Thank you, council.
We have another agenda item coming to us from Mr. Cockrell's office. Let's see. We're now going to hear from Greg Guertas and Charlie Joyce with Financial Solutions Group, which is FSG, which we've all heard a lot about. They're giving us about a 15-minute presentation on Monroe County's fiscal stability and the effect of possible annexation and on our budget. So welcome, Mr. Guertas and Mr. Joyce. The floor is yours, and I hope I didn't massacre your name.
No, thank you, and good evening, everyone. And just a preliminary question. Jeff, who will be presenting the document? TD, TSD, or myself?
Well, TSD, are you equipped to do that, or should we allow?
I do not have the presentation, but if you send it to me, I can get it up.
Sounds like it's up to, up to you, Mr. Guirtez.
I can share, not a problem. I have a couple of screens here and we will, I'll, I'll go right into it. And hopefully you'll be able to share and Jeff, if you get it to them, hopefully you'll be able, you can see the document at this point.
Yes.
Okay, great. So as you know, uh, we have worked very, very hard in a fairly limited amount of time, putting this, um, document together. This document is labeled the Sustainability Revenue and Spending Plan. This is a, a, a document that I actually created many, many, many years ago for various cities, counties and towns across the state of Indiana and even won an award from the Association of Indiana Counties. And what we try and do in this document is really set forth and what we're doing in, in specifically for Monroe County, we're using two actual years, the two budgeted years and projecting forward three, um, three years. So, um, we did have a very successful meeting with, um, some of the staff and also council member McKinn. And we went through, we may have went, spent an hour, I, I love going through these documents. I'll watch my time, but, uh, we probably spent an hour at least going through all the different pages and things like that. So let me explain, there is over 165 pages in this document. And so if you, uh, if you really like numbers and detailed numbers, uh, they're all here. So this serves three purposes as far as I'm concerned. Number one, kind of giving the council, the main purpose, giving the council and the county as a whole kind of a roadmap on where they're going financially and in many key funds. And you see those funds listed here. And, and so that's kind of section one. Section two really kind of begins on what I call PDF page 133. And that has a lot of different details, as you can see here, and hopefully you can see them pretty good. And, and the words aren't that important right here, but there's a lot of different details on how your property tax, how your property tax is going to grow. A lot of history, a lot of history to the income tax and what the projections are on the income tax. We've looked at each and every debt and Monroe County is very debt, uh, low debt. And, uh, we've got those in there and we've looked at refunding opportunities and all type of other things. We also set forth, and I thought this was very, very interesting after we met with staff, we set forth the, um, basically one of the funds that is at the, uh, city level, which is the summary of the City of Bloomington Public Safety Lit Fund. So that, that'll be a lot of interest. So let me, let me continue on and, and please stop me. I'm not looking at the screen, so I don't know if there's a hand, but stop me if you have any questions. As you, and, and I'm assuming that everybody has seen this document. So, um, in, on December 9th, this was the, the latest version and we put in the various observations. We call this insignificant financial questions the county must address. As you kind of go forward in kind of important, uh, to keep in mind in the context of this document. The next one is county financial obs- observations. The county is in a very good position. And, um, we've, we see that in a lot of our counties that we have really helped manage their finances and really have utilized this document because quite frankly, we've also got another document, which is called the Recovery Plan. And we've had a few counties that we've had to have recovery plans where their general fund is actually almost zero or in, in four or five years ago. And so it can be tough times for a lot of people. And I, I believe it'll be tough times going forward. So keep that in mind. So then we make various recommendations down here and, uh, you know, some of the things that we've kind of kept an eye on and, and things like that. We wanted, I didn't give you the third thing, the third thing, like, uh, the third point of this whole document is it is now the number one, uh, document that the rating agency looks for. So when you seek a rating, um, for any type of future financing or plan your future financing, the rating agency will say, number one, do you have, you know, talk to people on the outside about your budget? And second of all, do you have financial projections more than one year? They do not want to see, I mean, this is a very large corporation if you add up all the numbers. And they do not want to see a corporation run with a one-year budget, which is the normal cycle with the D L G. So any, uh, then we, so any questions on those type of things? If not, as you can see, then we build in all the different, uh, growth factors. Was there a question?
Greg?
Hi, Marty.
On the last, uh, hi, on one of the last sheets, it was talking about we were going to expect a negative fund balance in our, uh, public safety lit. Now, you might want to talk about that later, but I just wanted to keep that on your radar that we should discuss that.
Super. That is one of mine. And also what I want to point out, thanks, Marty. That was a great lead in to this. Please read this. If you do nothing else, read this page, which says, what we've done is we've set forth the projections, all of those assumptions that I built in the page right here, believe me. We know a lot of, a lot about all the different revenues. I, I spoke in over eight conferences last year or this year on budget, county budgets. Actually gave the county budget presentations for the Association of Counties. And so, um, really use some intelligence, so to speak, to back up those. But this is the key that when we use the, the factors and we develop the overall plan, there may be negatives. And keep in mind, I call that making you aware of where you're going. And maybe ultimately what you have to do is say, wow, we've going to have to adjust some things before we get there. And so that's really important to keep in mind with this document. So we set forth the general fund and a tremendous amount of detail by, by, by revenue source. And then also by department, by, by fund. And this is the general fund that has numerous departments. And so you can see that and you can see the, uh, where some of the new employees come in and, uh, how the salary increases are ultimately adding up for different departments. So very, very, um, if you're, again, if you ought to take some time, have a nice cup of coffee or the beverage of your choice and study this because lots of great information. What I'd like to do is go right to, uh, page 53, which is, this may be the one you were talking about. No, it's the, it's the later on, Marty, one of the other lit funds. This is the lit special purpose. This is a, a strong fund and the, this has served you well. And something that we want to kind of make you aware that it has a strong balance and there's always maybe further opportunities as we move forward. So keep in that, keep in mind. I think what's really, really important for the citizens of Monroe County to understand is not all of the L I T rates are subject to county government. They're actually controlled by the city government. This is, as you noted, as we noted below, is actually county driven. And this was the one that I remember you putting in many, many, uh, I'm going to call it moons ago, uh, for the maintenance of the juvenile detention center and, and things like that. So, um, next fund I wanted to point out is, uh, fun on page 66. For anyone, uh, following along in the crowd, uh, that is the Cume Capital Development Fund. It is usually a, a commissioner-driven fund. And it is a fund that is, um, basically for ongoing capital improvements. I like to call it pay-as-you-go. This is such a valuable fund to keep at your, at your, uh, point 033 cent level, uh, because it pays dividends and, and being able to cash fund, uh, certain operations and certain things going on. And so very, very important fund. Next one, more of the, one of the most important funds we've seen over the last year or two because of all the, um, all the pandemic and all that is the health fund. And the good news is the health fund is healthy. And so, um, that's kind of pretty critical and, uh, will serve the citizens well. We believe also in the future here. It's looking pretty good. Not that any of these don't need, you know, a, a hard look at some of the expenses that we're using. So I will take a second just to see if not, I'm going to go to pa- page 75. Any, uh, any follow-up questions so far? I just want to keep on track. Here's the, uh, uh, public safety lit. And this public safety lit is the one that, uh, you receive. And Charlie, jump in if you've got a comment on any of these. And as you can see here, um, we are experiencing a possibility in 2025 going negative. So again, what we're seeing here is the total revenue of 2.8 million, uh, total appropriated, uh, budgeted expenses of 3.5, 3.6. And so it will have, if, if maintained at that level, it will have a, um, what I call a cash drawdown. Now, keep in mind, we put this actual spend down percentage here and that actually creates the second line. Because what we see is, uh, you can't, not everybody spends their entire budget. So this entire appropriation, so we restate that level based upon historical percentages. So again, we've got really good handle on where you've been, where you are and where you're going. And so that in, on that level, then if you were able to give back in essence annually 13% or something like that, then you would not experience that spend down. But that may be one that we want to correct. Question there, Marty?
Good, right. Um, this is where we will see, uh, a rather large difference, uh, if the annexation should go through. I mean, all of the others we'll see an adjustment we'll have to make too because we rely so heavily on that 1% income tax. But this, we, we switched a lot of expenses over into this pay, public safety income tax. And the city's going to get a much larger proportionate share of this.
That's true. That's correct.
So that's really, I think, what, uh, of course, we'll know a little bit more next month that where we might end up. But that's where we're going to really need you to help us.
Yeah, and that's going to, Marty, the property tax in the circuit breaker and all that. Correct me if I'm wrong, Charlie, is going to hit us in 2025. And then the income will be one year lag. It'll be 2026. So we will, I, I like to use the term, we will have to batten down our hatch.
Right. And we cannot wait until that time before we start, uh, cutting back. So.
Absolutely.
Wall and then do it.
Very, very good points, very good points. Well, to keep moving, uh, rainy day fund. I'm going to go to page, um, PDF page 91. I, I'm, I'm really happy to say we've got a nice rainy day fund. It's by, by, by no means is it excessive. Because I can tell you, your peer group, your peer group, which is what we, uh, S and P calls, people that are rated similar to your level across the country. I can tell you that they have, I've seen as much as 20 million to, uh, to as little as 5 million. And so this is by far not overfunded. I, I, uh, we put a minimum here of 5 million. And we are trying to impress upon you in one of our recommendations, we'd like to put a minimum target balance on some of these. And the rating agency will definitely want to hear what you consider rainy day all about. We consider a rainy day fund as your last bottom dollar, uh, that you would hit or at least appropriating it for, we've been appropriating half a million dollars in a lot of places for storm damage. Because believe it or not, we've had storm damages, storms all over the place. And, um, it's a quick place to have an appropriation to clean the roads if you needed or something like that. So we've actually been putting in, in most of the budgets now, 500,000 at least in calling it emergency. So kind of, uh, kind of an important point there I'd like to make. 94, it's awesome. You, you are very, there's not a lot of people that have election funds. And you have what I call a kind of a cumulative election fund. They usually ebb and tide it within the general fund. I think this is awesome management. And, um, I think this really speaks for itself. And so we, we are able to fund those ebbs and tides as we know when we have general elections. Moving on then, um, we, we've got all the E 911 reassessment for the, so we keep the, um, assessor, I heard her, uh, earlier, we keep her funded. And, uh, so we can get the most valuable thing, which is the property tax bills out and go from there because that's really important for revenue. I'm going to go to page 127. And this was, uh, council members, uh, McKinn's recommendation. And we put in, we did a little exploration here into the, the Fund 151, which is the Public Safety Lit Fund at the city level and did notice that they have, um, they have had pretty aggressive balances. They really budgeted a heck of a lot here. I'm just going to call it that of 7.8 million. I don't know if that's real or not, but it is going to draw down the balance and may mean some re-proportioning of income taxes in the future here. So I guess I want to really make the council aware of that. Okay. Because if we were to re-proportion and put more into here, that might take from somewhere else. Does that make sense? Cause the, the pie might not change in total. It might just be who gets a bigger piece. And as we know with the holiday season, the biggest piece, uh, usually, uh, is, is something someone goes after pretty quick. So, um, next one then is like, there's your coronavirus fund. You've not spent anything. We do, you do need to get your recovery plan, uh, in the works for that. We've been insisting, uh, county, counties writing that recovery plan once you decide what you're going to spend it on. And this is section six and again, or section two. Again, you can't see a more valuable section because it's got a lot of detail. I will note that the 200,000 level for circuit breaker at a two, two cent, $2 tax rate. That's really awesome. We actually see a lot of the growing counties down here in the 90 level. So that's a nice priced home before the circuit breaker actually, um, you know, uh, cuts in. That's the difference between the negatives and the positives. So various, uh, like we've got the projection settlement. We've done a comparison there. Everybody always wants to know how they looked to some of their neighboring counties. And our overall, I call it 39 pennies that Monroe County runs it, it's government on is very, very competitive. And so, and you can see, you can, if you get in trouble in certain counties, you can get all the way up to 76 cents. And not quite sure how they got there, but, uh, that's a different story for another time. So.
Greg, Greg, could you go back to that screen? The other counties? And I don't know just which other counties it, it is, but I know that, uh, are many other counties around, um, have put in an extra income tax. Remember when in order to get the public safety tax, you had to agree to put in a percent, uh, a, a certain portion amount to reduce your property tax rate. And that remained in place and they, they're still living with that. So they could be having, uh, looking like their reduction is less for their property tax, but it's because they're paying it with income tax.
Exactly, exactly. Yes. And that's why we actually did put some of this income tax down here. And Marty, you and I have been around a, a while here. And yes, I, I, I remember that very, very well. And so, yeah, there's a, there's a lot of strategic changes, which by the way, we also put this in here, which shows you as your, your income taxes comparison to the 92 counties. And being down here in the lower quote quartile is actually very telling. Now, I don't necessarily believe it is bad to be up here like Hendrix and Hancock because they also have special things going on. And those are the two high-powered, along with Hamilton, they're the high-powered counties that are growing. And those are the two high-powered, along with Hamilton, they're the high-powered counties that are growing enormously. So, and then, like I said, we've showed you all the various details of the income taxes and things like that. I probably have gone over my allotted fifteen minutes, I wish they would put the fifteen-minute clock up. So how else can, Charlie, anything you think I critically missed? And is there anything else I can help you with tonight? Because I do know you have a long agenda, and I've been on a couple of these, I've seen it. So, anything else I can help with? I hope that wasn't too fast. Charlie, anything to add?
No, I think you, you really covered it, that was great.
Anything I can do to help council?
It certainly gives us a lot to think about. Are there any questions or comments from council? Yes, let's hop.
I just wanted to say to you, Greg, that we had really, we, the county council, or at least I certainly thought, that we had asked for this a long time before you ever even knew we had asked for it. And so we're sitting here waiting on, why is it taking you so long? You hadn't even been told we wanted it, if I'm understanding the whole scenario. So if, if you felt like we were pushing hard, it was because we thought we would have it during our budget work session. So we know where we were, at least this council member thought that's what was happening. So I appreciate you pulling this together when you did find out, and it's really helpful.
Thank you very much. And the key is, now we've got a great model. We've got an awesome model, and so I like to call that water over the bridge. And, and we've got an awesome model that, if you want to see a couple other scenarios, by all means, it is not hard to do. And so, and the key is going to be when we, we'd like to get it updated for the actuals of twenty twenty-one, and then stair-step from there, you've got a heck of a document. Because I, I really do believe that twenty twenty-three could get a little tighter on you. And so I think that's inevitable. We also still feel there, there might be, the state feels there might be some impact on the trust balances. And we're keep, we keep an eye on that for numerous counties. And, and like I said, that's why the association had me spent, had me go around and teach the budget class. Because we really stay on top of all these indices.
Could I ask you, are those still available to be seen? They, that was recorded, I remember watching it. Is that still available for the other, any council member who would like to review it?
This document, or Marty, I'm sorry, what?
Oh, when you gave the class at AIC.
Oh, um, yes, I believe we do have that. And, yeah, I went in and even made some specific revenue projections. So we'd be happy to send that, that along. And we, I just did an ARP class, unlike anybody else, I did it to the auditors. It was not anything about all, all the current consultants are talking about, the old stuff. I'm talking about protecting the county going forward, because the portal and those things. And I actually did, through the American Institute of Certified Public Accountants, did an observation throughout the entire country. And I put in actual live examples under all seven categories of expenditures of actual projects that are being done. And so it's very, it's very interesting. So I'll send through Jeff both of those, and then he can disperse those.
Thank you. Wonderful.
Both of those documents may be very valuable as we go forward.
Thank you.
So thank you all again, very much.
Hi, Councilor Munson, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Garitas. I had one, one revenue projection that I questioned, and that is food and beverage. It is on page twenty-six of our packet, and on page, ooh, twenty, no. I can't get to it otherwise. If, anyway, it's, it's part of the assumption.
Yes, I'll, I'll reshare, I have it up here. And you're probably asking about this right here, the five five.
Yes, I am.
Negative twenty.
Yes, I am, thank you. And I don't understand the negative twenty percent in twenty twenty-five.
Charlie, go ahead, I'll let you talk for a moment.
That is really related to the city of Bloomington annexation. So the county only gets food and beverage revenues on the establishments that are out in the county. And so when Bloomington does that annexation, they're going to take a large part of those businesses that are paying it to the county right now. So it's, it's just the county portion of food and beverage. So it's, it is a big impact when Bloomington goes out and does that annexation.
So, so we are, quote, losing some of the establishments that are in the county rather than the city.
Yeah, they'll, they'll be allocated to the city after that.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, very good observation there.
Councilor Hock?
Uh, yes, it was, uh, Councilmember Munson, it was estimated when we first put this in place that we would lose about three hundred and fifty thousand, I believe it was, on the county's portion if indeed the annexation went through. So, I mean, that's been some time ago, so I expect this to be more than that. So we have to be making it very clear, we're not putting any long-term debt or anything on that food and beverage that we wouldn't have the dollars to pay.
Yeah, most of my counties that have that, especially in and around Indianapolis, they consider that almost the fund they go to right before rainy day. And, and so, you know, and they do use it for a lot of strategic different stuff, but a lot of one-time stuff, usually.
We have too, so thank you.
Sure.
Councilor Muntan?
Yeah, I guess I just wanted to call attention to, you know, I know it's kind of buried deep in the report, and maybe Mr. Garitas might have some comments about it. But he does, he does have a, a page that kind of describes the, gives kind of a bound for the amount of revenue that a potential corrections tax rate would, would generate, both for capital and for operations, if we get to the point where a new facility is needed. I think that, that information is, is really useful, particularly for those who are on the committee that are, are considering recommendations for justice response, to kind of have those facts at their fingertips. Yes, that is, that's the page I was talking about.
So yes, Jeff, and just for council's knowledge, I, I actually created this statute for, with the assistance of Representative Cherry in Hancock County. We actually installed the twenty basis points specifically for Hancock County. Representative Cherry thought it was maybe a good ideal to do it statewide. So they did go ahead and, rather than have special, they injected the twenty basis points statewide. And we do have a separation, which I went through a negotiation process to get that, on the sixteen basis points, or sixteen basis points of the twenty basis points is for debt service, and then jail operations is for basis points. And so we wanted to, we wanted to recognize when we did that, that when you build a new facility, you do have increased operating expenses. Believe it or not, even if you do it, and I've, I've done three or four jails recently, eighty-five million down to twenty million. And you do, no matter what, you do usually have increases, even if you design it very, very well. So we did put that, those estimates in there, and I thought that was very, and, and I'd just like to say, I'm very proud of this one, because this really has helped a tremendous amount of counties across the state. So. So we also like to say, if, you know, as you go forward, if there's a, you know, we like to say financial solutions, solutions is our middle name. If you have a dilemma that you know is coming, or you want, you want to address, we're always up for writing new laws and testifying for new things. If, if you see something that really affects Monroe County, and we really need to get fixed legislatively, I, I do a lot of that now, I've got over five or six new ones coming this year, so.
Now, Councilor Hock?
Yes, uh, getting back to just whether or not we would need legislation changed or whatever. If it's not changed, would it not require the city to enact this? The income tax council, which is controlled by the city?
No, I believe this one is, a county can do it on its own, county council.
Oh, wow, oh, oh, great, great. So will you send us the legislation number, you know, the, so we can look this up and study it?
Absolutely, Jeff's already probably, he's so good at this, and Margie, they probably already have it, but we will make sure they get it.
Thank you.
Anything else? Sorry, I'm, I'm going over my time, but lots of good questions. And so what I'd like to do is, why don't you, we'll, we'll wind it down, and think about it. I'd love to come and talk to you, again, in January, maybe if you want, or, you know, however you want. Lots of information, and, and please, I keep telling everybody, if, if you, if nothing else, put it under your bed pillow, it'll either give you a crook in the neck, or it'll sink in by osmosis, so. Thank you and good evening.
Thank you very much. I think that at this point, we should move forward to the next agenda item. And that is number eight.
Counsel, I move to approve the aviation department's request for an additional appropriation in Fund forty-eight zero two dash zero 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 Aviation Building in the amount of thirty thousand, three hundred and eighty-three dollars in the services category.
Second.
Welcome, Mr. Laverty. Would you like to tell us a little bit about this request?
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Okay, uh, due to chronic flooding at the Cook Aviation Fixed Base Operator Facility at the airport, the Board of Aviation Commissioners entered into an agreement with Waddle Brothers, and I'm sorry, entered into a contract with Waddle Brothers and Cook to perform drainage improvements around that facility for a total cost of sixty thousand, seven hundred and seven, and seven, sixty thousand dollars, seven hundred and sixty-six. The airport owns that building, and we have a current lease with Cook Aviation that runs through twenty twenty-six. Cook will be paying half of that per the agreement, and the airport would pay half as well, not to exceed thirty thousand dollars and eight hundred and thirty-eight. So we are requesting an additional appropriation to the, to fund that half, which would be the thirty thousand dollars. The, yes, all right, the, the, the building that we're talking about, it's owned by the airport. Cook has been a longtime leaseholder there. They sank a significant amount of money into renovations a few years ago. But one of the issues is the terrain here at the airport. When you come along Kirby Road, the eastern portion of the property is much higher. And when you get a strong rain, you get this, you'll get a sheet flow coming down from the eastern half over there, Kirby Road, over by the tea hangers, and it just kind of washes down into that building. And it's caused them significant damage on, on several occasions. And the, the big storm we had here in the late summer caused them significant problems. Again, they had to tear out all of the drywall in the building, replace a lot of furniture and carpet. And they, they, that's when they came to the airport looking for a permanent fix. And as it's our building, we own that, and we still have them for four more, not, till, till twenty twenty-six. We think it's an excellent opportunity to, to invest in that building.
Thanks, are there any questions or comments from council? Mr. Deckard?
I was very curious, do you have a lot of flooding issues on airport properties? Or is it just kind of centered in that area?
We, we don't see a lot of flooding, per se. One of the problems we do have, though, is, is we've got a lot of property, right? We do see a lot of erosion that's occurring on the west side, where there is no development. But we're working with, we're working with our, our tenant farmer, who, who farms those fields there, and working with soil, the Soil Conservation Office, USDA, to come together and kind of put a plan, an action plan together to stop some of this erosion. But as far as like the, the airport and flooding, we don't see very much of that. But Cook, the Cook FBO building is just probably in the worst spot for any kind of potential flooding. They're just at the bottom of a, of a little hill on the east side of the property. And the drainage that would go, take that flood, that floodwater to the southern part of the airport has to travel a little bit. So one of the things we're doing with this project is, is enlarging some of the underwater, I mean, sorry, the underground pipes to enhance flow away from that property. But that's really the only site where we see any kind of flooding.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from council? Okay, I think then I'll check for a public comment on this issue. It looks like we have one person with their hand raised. Great, could you please state your name for the record?
Yes, my name's Perry Robinson, and I guess this question is for Carlos. The thirty thousand dollars you're talking about, that's the half of the Waddle Brothers, correct?
Correct.
And that area right there where you're talking about, I'll, I'll agree with you. I live on the west side of you, on the, okay. I'll agree with you right there. It does flood pretty bad right there if you get a bad, you know, bad rain. But also, the crop ground that you have right there, I believe that's all no-till, am I correct?
Uh, yeah, we've, we've exercised no-till.
And, I mean, if we till that up at least one time, it might kind of straighten that ground up a little bit, wouldn't it?
Hmm, it's a, it's a, it's a conversation worth having. One of our, one of the agreements we have with our farmer is that it's a no-till parcel, but I, I'm willing to have a conversation about, you know, altering our practices to reduce erosion, and we would work with the county on that.
Well, I would agree on that myself, because I see that erosion on your backside. I think that if the farmer would be let to till that ground at least one time, it would probably fix a lot of that erosion problem you have on the backside. But really, I agree with Carlos. I think, you know, that area right there where Cook is, that's normally where all the water runs to anyway. And I think oversizing them pipes right there would really help that water drainage out a lot. So Carlos, I, I commend you for coming on, and that's what needs to be done, I agree. I just hope that maybe we can kind of help you out a little bit, and maybe see what we can do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Robinson. Are there any other public comments or questions? It looks like we have a council comment, Ms. Munson.
Yes, I thank you, Mr. Robinson, for, for your concern and recommendations. I just want to say that we have some expert advice that can be provided by Monroe County Soil and Water Conservation. And I think Mr. Laverty will, will, may find some, some excellent help there. Thank you.
If I recall correctly, Mr. Laverty is working with Martha and that office. And they've done some, some good work already out there. And they've um done some, some good work already out there. So I think whether it's a till, no-till, or bio swell, or French drains, or whatever, I think they're, they're looking at the bigger picture. So I appreciate that. Are there any other uh questions or comments from at this point, public or counsel? Mixing. Okay, I think then we are ready for a vote. Do we have a roll call vote?
Counselor Wilk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. We have another agenda item from the airport, item B.
Counsel, I move to approve the aviation department's request for an additional appropriation in fund nine-one-six-one dash zero-zero-zero-zero Airport Monitoring System Fund in the amount of six thousand dollars in the services category.
Second. Okay.
Okay, what is this item?
All right, uh, after purchasing and implementing vert tower to count aircraft operations at the Monroe County Airport, the Indiana Department of Transportation has offered a reimbursement grant for up to six thousand dollars. The department originally paid for the software from the General Aviation Fund, and we would like the reimbursement applied to the line from which it was paid. Contractual, our contractual account. The department is requesting a new fund be created to accept the reimbursement from NDOT and if needed, appropriate a line. A few months ago, the airport, after, after working with NDOT, the NDOT provided some informational webinars about some, some aircraft tracking software that was available for our purposes using ADS-B technology, kind of satellite technology in cahoots with transponders that are located on certain aircraft, most aircraft these days. If, if you've ever used like FlightAware, Flight Tracker type software, it's the same technology, but we have a antenna on our air traffic control tower which can track any plane with an ADS-B transceiver for about four or five hundred miles. And it allows us to get much more accurate aircraft counts, which are very important when it comes to funding with the FAA. It helps us track aircraft that land here, take off here. And once they're on the ground here, we're still able to track exactly where they go on property. So it helps us understand also which of our pavement services are more heavily used than others. We're only here, you know, during regular business hours. And so outside of those hours, the airport is still open. And this helps us kind of monitor and see where our traffic is flowing on property, on pavement when we're gone, which will help us with long-term planning when it comes time to looking at repaving projects or restriping projects. And also, like I, like I mentioned earlier, it gives us a much more accurate count of our operations after hours when county staff is not here, when the tower controllers go home. And it also gives us a very accurate glimpse of, of the type of traffic that's here. It doesn't just tell us when someone's here. It tells us exactly what kind of aircraft they are, where they came from, and who the owner is, which is useful in different scenarios. I'd show you, I'd do a screenshot really quick with you guys and share my screen. I'm just too afraid I'm going to screw that up, but if you, if, if anybody wants to try it, I'll try it. I'll leave that up to you guys to decide if, if you want to take a look at that. I've got it up on my browser right now.
Do we have interest in seeing, seeing his browser?
No big deal. Trust me.
I think we're good. I think, I, I think, well, um, it sounds fascinating really, but let's, let's see if there are specific questions from counsel for you. No questions. I was curious, um, is this, is this a, it's a, it's from contractual. So it's, is it a one-time fee or is this sort of a, we're paying for a license to use?
Yeah, it's a license to use. We have a, we have a five-year contract. We have a five-year contract with them. It's six thousand dollars. Wait, uh, where is the contract here? It's a, it's six thousand dollars per year and we entered into a five, kind of five-year, a three-year contract, I'm sorry. And NDOT would reimburse us. It's a one-time reimbursement.
So we get one year.
Six thousand dollars, yeah.
Okay, that was my next question.
Yes.
Um, okay, thank you. Are there, is there any, are there any other questions from counsel? Any public comment? Okay, um, then may we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Wilk.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
You.
We are now at item nine on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Emergency Management Department's request for an additional appropriation in fund nine-one-zero-eight dash zero-zero-zero-zero Indiana Homeland Security Fund in the amount of three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars in the capital category.
Second.
Uh, do we have, oh, there you are, Ms. Petroline, welcome.
Hi, thank you for having me and carving out a little time for me.
A pleasure.
So I bring to you a grant that we actually applied for earlier this year to the Department of Homeland Security. It was a competitive grant and we were awarded three thousand eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. We wrote this grant in hopes to purchase AEDs for our office, because since we have a new construction office, and in collaboration with the airport, putting one out there at one of their facilities. This has been presented to the Board of Commissioners and it was approved. So I am coming to you in hopes to appropriate a line. And it is a reimbursement grant and it is always already actually in the works of being in the grant timeline. But again, just asking for that line to be created so we can start purchasing those AEDs.
Great, thank you. Congratulations on your grant.
Thank you.
Um, are there any comments or questions from counsel? Counselor Hawke.
Yes, is that for, uh, which budget year are you saying you want this line on?
So our performance period for that grant is with emergency management performance. So that is from July first of twenty twenty-one to June thirtieth of twenty twenty-two. We have not made any purchases, so I would hope that the line would be put in the twenty twenty-two budget.
Okay. Um, can't change twenty twenty-two budget right now. We'd have to, any changes in the budget, I believe, has to be done after the first of the year. I think Kim's got her hand up, so I'll shut down this.
Since it is a grant and it goes from performance period, since it's a grant and it runs from performance period to a certain date, it's not based on a calendar year. So it's based on your performance period. So whatever you approve now will just be carried forward to the next year at the end of the year. And then you have that amount carried forward till the end of that performance period, which is June. Is that what you said, June thirtieth?
June thirtieth.
Yeah, so si- since that is a, it's a, what we call a non-fiscal or a non-calender year grant. It doesn't run on a, this is a twenty twenty-one or a twenty twenty-two. It's the performance period.
Right, right, right. Got it. Just like future planning.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments from counsel? Are there any public comments? Okay, could we have a roll call vote, please, then?
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wilk.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we have uh the clerk's office with item number ten.
Counsel, I move to approve the clerk's request to create a new account line and approval and additional, approve an additional appropriation in fund one zero 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 dash zero 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 one general fund clerk in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars sixty-six cents in the capital category and to simultaneously approve a category transfer from the supplies category to the capital category in the amount of six thousand seven hundred and fifteen dollars and sixty-six cents.
Second.
Uh, it's my understanding that the clerk's office could not be here. Michelle, do you have some, some information for us?
Uh, just so of information for the public, what happened was the clerk's office wanted to purchase some chairs. And they wanted to use their office supplies line, which you can't do that because the items that they were purchasing are a capital item. And so they didn't go through the proper process of, you know, getting this approved with the commissioner's office. So once that was found out and everything, they want, what they would like to do is they're asking for an account line to be added into their fund, which is into their general fund. And then they want to make a category transfer from the supplies into the capital fund so that they can pay this invoice before the end of the year.
Okay, thank you. It looks like we have, already have a hand up. Mr. McKim?
Sorry, I just wanted to clarify because I, I think the request is really straightforward. It's just a transfer of an existing appropriation, but it's listed in the agenda as approving an additional appropriation. And I don't actually think that's correct. There's no additional appropriate. We're just creating a line and transferring from their existing appropriation, right?
That is correct. When they first sent it over, they were asking for an additional appropriation. And then after we got it all out and everything, then that's when we said, oh, yeah, you, you're just making the change from supplies to a, which is a transfer. So there was just some confusion on their paperwork that they submitted originally.
Okay, so just for the record, there, this is solely a transfer of an appropriation they already have to, from one line to another. No additional appropriation. Good.
Correct. We just need permission to add that capital line into their budget line.
It, it's actually more than changing from line to line. It's changing from category to
Right, category, right. That's why they need approval. And I certainly, and I, I support this purchase. I mean, those chairs were nasty and this is, you know, definitely a straightforward way of, of making the chairs easier to use and easier to clean. But, yeah, I, I just wanted to make sure that everybody knew we weren't actually, they weren't actually requesting additional resources.
Great. Um, any other questions or comments in counsel? Yes, Ms. Hock.
Just as a caution, we're supposed to figure this out and do the transfer before we spend the money. At this time, it's like too late for that, but just for all the departments to recognize, if they want to make a transfer, get it down in that capital category to contact their council liaison and get it done right.
And a note to everyone that chairs are not office supplies. Just in case.
And I, I would also like to remind everyone that anytime a department wishes to make a capital purchase, they need to run that through the commissioner's office.
Yes. Um, any other comment? Is there a public comment? Okay, may, maybe have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wilk.
Yes.
Counselor McKim.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. Um, let's move to item eleven from our health department.
Counsel, I move to approve the health department's request for additional appropriations in fund eight-one-one-one dash zero 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 Crisis COAG Supplemental Workforce Grant in the amount of four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the personnel category, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the supply category, and four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the services category for a total of one million, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second.
Welcome, Ms. Cottle.
Thank you. And thanks again for get, making sure that this was on our agenda for a while. If you recall, we talked about this earlier. We knew that this money was coming and it is actually, it is public health crisis response funding that is coming for local health departments to also support our schools during COVID. And we had an estimate of the money, but there was just a lot of unknowns. And we decided to put this on the agenda and you, and we would keep tabling it until, well, today I got the grant award. So I guess it was better timing. It could have come tomorrow. It would have been in, in real dire shape, but these funds we will use, it does require us to hire a school liaison. I have a meeting with PAC tomorrow, so thank you PAC members for calling that meeting so that we can get this position in place so that we can go ahead and not only capture these funds, it is a deliverable-based grant. So it's a total of four hundred and forty thousand dollars that we will get. And it will get it in three installments based on, one, us hiring a liaison and signing the contract will get us a quarter of it. Then we'll meet some additional deliverables, get the rest and so on. We, so we have that plan in place. We want to get the majority of these funds to the schools. And I want to give a shout out to the Chamber of Commerce. I've reached out to them to help, help us work through how that division might be done equitably with a minimum for each school. So I'm glad that they've offered their expertise in that as well. So what I'm actually asking you tonight, now we appropriated the kind of the full funds in each one of those amounts, just because we didn't know what we were exactly going to get. So in this personnel line, I would say eighty thousand dollars, that will more than cover. We're waiting on the whiffs, you know, all of this to go. I think that that is definitely going to cover more than what we need there. We can put, if we could put twenty thousand in the supplies and the remainder in services, because most of these funds will be going directly to the schools. So that is the way for, for us to get those out. We do, if we are successful with this, we are told that we should get another year of funding. And so even if we have eighty thousand in there for staff, we can carry that forward. Again, these are deliverable funds. They're not reimbursement funds. So essentially, there's somewhere in between that upfront and reimbursable, right?
Do we need to amend the motion to reflect the new amounts then? Is that what I'm hearing?
Probably.
Okay, and, um, so we have eighty thousand in personnel, twenty thousand in supplies, and I
Three hundred and forty thousand.
Yes, I did my math right. Three hundred and forty thousand in services. And I'll just go ahead and offer that amendment, Mr. Deckard, if, if that's okay.
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate that.
So I move to amend the motion that's on the table. So, I move to amend the motion that's on the table to change the amounts in the personnel, supplies, and services categories to $80,000 personnel, $20,000 supplies, and $340,000 in the services category.
Second.
Thank you. Do we have any questions or comments from council on the amendment? Think I need to ask if there's public comment on the amendment. Seeing none, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor McKem. Counselor McKem.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. So do we have any questions or comments from council on the overall issue? Thank you. Keep here.
Yes, thank you, Ms. Cottle. I know you're very busy and I wanted to extend my congratulations for this grant. It's really exciting it came in today. That's great news. And I, I just wanted to offer you an opportunity to talk about your existing relationship within the schools. I know that the Monroe County Health Department was just in the schools, doing some really great work there. And so, if you could just maybe talk a little bit about that, that'd be wonderful to give some context to this too.
Certainly. And you know, sometimes when we think about schools in our community, we think of some, for some individuals, when they think MCCSC, Monroe County School Corporation, they don't realize that we have another school corporation on the west side of town and Richland Bean Blossom School Corporation as well. But we also have many smaller schools. We've got private parochial charter schools. And we really do, I feel like, have a good relationship with them. They're, they're good partners and, you know, they're, they're always looking to work together and how we can cooperate together. We did, you just mentioned, we had our second dose Super Shot clinics last week and vaccinated almost 800 on Saturday. I think it, what, or no, take that back, almost 800 total on Thursday and Saturday. So, we're also going into the schools individually and doing clinics. So, we've got lots going on and then plus the actual public health clinic and various outreaches that we're doing. So, I think they, oh, I have that written down. I think we've done over 3,000 vaccinations in our five to 11-year-olds. I think probably around, and these are all preliminary, don't hold me to these exact numbers, just under 2,000 that are, just have had their second dose. And that's within our clinic. So, you know, lots, lots going on and we're anxious to be as much of a help to our schools as we can be. We know that we want our kids in school, you know, and, and we want them it to be a healthy and safe place for them to be.
That's great. That's wonderful. There are so many students are being protected. Thank you so much.
Counselor Deckard.
Thank you very much. And while I am not good with quick math, one thing I am tremendously decent at is spotting where this county brings in opportunities from outside of this community to support the people of this community. And Penny Cottle, you do that remarkably and it is absolutely huge. The, the bailiwick of things that the health department and yourself are handling, it always amazes me. And what more, what's more amazes me is the dollars that come into our community from outside the community to support the children of our community. And I did pick up with my youngest today and I'm looking at the facilities, the things our teachers go through on a normal day, let alone a, well, we happened to have a pandemic for some time. It is tremendous and this is huge. It, it, it just, it blows my mind. And I hope the, the folks that are watching this home understand that work that you do to bring that in for this community. Of course, we have a lot of departments doing that and it's just makes all the difference in the world. So, I want to, as a parent, I want to say thank you, but as a council member, bless you. Thank you for, for going after this.
Thank you. You know, there, I know there were some counties who said they were not taking it because of the work involved in it. And I'm like, I can't, I cannot do that. So.
Counselor Hawke.
Just as the mother of a teacher, I just want to thank everyone who's willing to get out there and make sure that they have what they need to stay healthy and be able to teach children. So, she doesn't teach here, but you know, teachers are teachers. And they love, they really love their students and their community. We are so blessed to have good teachers. They need better recognition.
I agree.
Are there any other questions or comments from Ms. Cottle? I did want to ask, you spoke about the work that you've done on vaccinations for five-year-olds and up. What else, what types of things will this grant be covering? I, I'm guessing other than vaccinations.
Yeah, part of it is to make sure that, and we can do referrals, but we'll continue. We've done vaccine clinics in our schools for years now. So it will help support that. Our goal, the schools can use the funds really in any way that they need. So if they need additional staff for contact tracing, if they need, they want to do testing in their schools, there's programs for that. But they, if they need staff or something for that, perhaps it will help them. We are looking at using some of those funds to kind of augment the testing that's available in the community. And so we're looking at that. There's a lot of, kind of planning going on in the midst of trying to get all of this money sorted out. But the schools, it has to be used on COVID. So it could be used to provide supplies, whether it's masks or sanitizer or cleaning, staff to clean. If it's things that they need to put in place in order to keep people safer during COVID, whatever it is that they need. And that's one of the reasons we felt it was important to get some direct funds direct, directly to the schools so that they could use it where they needed it the most.
Thank you. Counselor Hawke. You're on, you're on mute.
Even boxes of Kleenexes. I mean, teachers continue to buy Kleenexes out of their own funds to take because those kids need Kleenexes all the time. So that gets expensive. So, yeah, I mean, this would be able to be used for that kind of thing as well.
As long as you can connect it to COVID and, you know, prevention. And that's what Kleenex does, right? Cover your cough, cover your nose, cover your mouth, whether it's flu, you know, whatever it is. So, absolutely, variety of supplies.
Any other questions or comments? So any public comments on this item? Seeing none, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor McKem.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Now we have item B from the health department as well.
Council, I move to approve the health department's request for an additional appropriation in fund 9117-0000, local grants in the amount of $4,487.92 in the supplies category.
Second.
You're right. And yes, these funds are CARES grant funds that the department received to purchase additional naloxone so that we can continue to have an ample supply to share with our residents. During the pandemic overdoses and, and overdose deaths have certainly increased across the nation and the state and getting naloxone. People trained to use it and getting it out into the hands of the people that need it. And that could be anybody. You know, any of us can carry naloxone and be trained so that if we come upon somebody who has overdose that we could reverse that overdose and prevent that death. So this is to purchase additional naloxone that we can distribute.
Thank you. Are there any council comments or questions? Counselor Iverson.
Yeah, as, as someone who's seen this work on the streets of Monroe County, I can share firsthand knowledge of just how transformative and how fast this drug works. And someone who is experiencing an overdose, I really want to give a shout out to the Monroe County Sheriff's Department who are highly trained in the distribution of this, as well as those who work in our ambulance systems. It, it's just, it's really amazing to see someone literally come back from the dead with this drug. And we need as much of this in our community as possible. So, I'll be supporting this with as much gusto as I can.
Are there any other council comments? I have a question. How does, you said anyone could have, have this and administer it? How does one access both the, the naloxone, but also the training to know how to use it?
Right. Good question. For us to dispense it, there's a, and the training's pretty brief, actually. So they can contact our office, our Office of Population Health and Outreach. It was our education department, but our Office of Population Health and Outreach can do that. The Indiana Recovery Alliance can do that training. And there are a variety of other partners in the community. Positive Link, and I can't even go through the list, where people can go and get the training and get it. So, we, we have lots of partners in the community that we distribute to because they have other individuals that they can then train and distribute naloxone to as well. And if you didn't see recently, I believe Governor Holcomb just announced the first vending machine for naloxone in Indiana. And I, I have to tell you that I had seen, it's probably been four years ago now, the use of vending machines for this kind of thing and thought what a, a unique idea to do that. So, that could be something, and there are naloxone boxes that, there's another program that's putting those out in the community to make it just more accessible to people and make it accessible 24/7.
So the, the training and naloxone would be free, I would assume, for anyone who wanted to know how to do it and have some, okay.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. Counselor Iverson?
I just wanted to, to jump on what Penny just shared about the vending machine. And that is in a jail setting. And with the Monroe County jail right next to our Stride Center, it sure does seem to me like that might be a good idea for Monroe County as well, or something similar. Just a thought.
Any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment? We have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKem.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Great. And now we are on to item C.
Council, I move to approve the health department's request for an additional appropriation in fund 8126-9622, Futures Clinic in the amount of $45,000 in the personnel category.
Second.
Great. So as you know, and Marty, I think it was you that just mentioned Futures Clinic. So our Title X grant is an April to March grant. And we usually get funds early, you know, earlier in the year and then we get amendments throughout. So this is our First Amendment to that, to get us a few more months. The grant cycle, as I mentioned, I think is April through March. And so usually in the new year, so around February, they will start looking at all of the clinics and seeing who's going to need a little extra money and start shifting that around. So we oftentimes will get a little bit of another amendment and get a little bit more money to get us through March as well. So you can expect that in the new year. We got an additional $45,000 we needed in the personnel category. And seems like there was something else I was going to mention about that, but I don't remember what it was now. So, those are the highlights, right? $45,000 additional we needed in the personnel lines.
Great. Are there any council comments or questions? Public comment on this item? Seeing none. Before we vote, I did want to share that the Commissioner's Administrator, Angie Purdy, wrote in the chat that a naloxone box, which, right there, I just love the name, a naloxone box is either installed or will be installed outside the Stride Center very soon. So, naloxone box. I wish I'd thought of that. That's awesome. And back to business. Could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Iverson.
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz.
Yes.
Counselor McKem.
Yes.
Counselor Munson.
Yes.
Counselor Deckard.
Yes.
Counselor Hawke.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Have a good night. We are now at item 12 on our agenda.
Council, I move to approve the highway department's request for a midpoint hire of the MSF assistant position in fund 1197-0000, stormwater management, and to simultaneously amend the 2021 and 2022 salary ordinances. Account line 10076, MS4 Assistant, 40 hours, PAT4, PATC, non-exempt to midpoint hire status with an effective date of December 13, 2021.
Second.
Hello, Ms. Ridge. Welcome.
Good evening. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. I know you have a long agenda. I believe you've all received a copy of the resume. I received the sign-off from the HR department. So that's, that's my request for a mid-hire.
All right. And it looks like the person has 15 years of experience doing something similar, which seems to fulfill most of the, the requirements for consideration. Are there any questions or comments from council members?
It's the requirements.
All right. Any public comment on this item?
Michelle has her hand raised.
Oh, 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 okay. Oh gosh, okay. Sorry, Michelle. Please comment.
Thank you. I, I just don't have the hand raise icon for some reason, so I'm, you know. So, what, I just wanted to explain why we're going with the effective date of December 13, 2021. The person began employment with the county yesterday. And so in an effort to keep having to have a one pay rate at one amount and another pay rate at another amount, I'm asking for this effective date. And that helps the payroll. That way we're not having a split pay in the middle of a pay, pay period.
Works for me. Makes sense. Any other questions? And I think I already asked for public comments. Seeing none, let's do a roll call vote. If Ms. Miller is not available.
Okay, I will give you the roll call.
Thank you.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're now at item 13 on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Probation Department's request for a new position of an Evidence-Based Practices Coordinator, probation officer position, and to simultaneously amend the 2021 and 2022 Salary Ordinances in Fund 9142-0000 Community Corrections Grant, 77% split, and Fund Project Income User Fees, 23% split. Account Line 14289 Evidence-Based Practices Coordinator, 35 hours SOPO, PATC, non-exempt.
Second.
Um, welcome, Mrs. Brady. Looks like you have lots of other folks with you.
I do. I have a team. Good evening. Linda Brady, Chief Probation Officer. And I have with me our team who works on evidence-based practices in continuous quality improvement within the probation department. We've been working within the department to get a, an evidence-based practices trainer and coordinator for quite a few years. And in fact, we applied with the Department of Correction several years ago and received a Continuous Quality Improvement Supervisor position. And that was supposed to be a full-time position. However, we ended up having a pre-trial program that kind of got foisted upon us when Indiana, the Supreme Court said every county needed to have a pre-trial program. So our Continuous Quality Improvement Supervisor had to divide her duties between that job and being the pre-trial program director. So, and so who you have before you, and I'd like to introduce you. So Becca Streit, she is our Community Corrections Executive Director and also Deputy Chief Probation Officer. And she oversees the Community Corrections Grant. And I also want to have a big shout out to her. She wrote the grant this year and received an extra $172,000 from the Department of Correction over what we received last year. So it's really kudos to Becca and her grant writing. And it was just an excellent job to be able to get $172,000 extra, which is what this position's funded with. Also, you have with you Chelsea Walters. Chelsea works for Becca, and Chelsea is our Continuous Quality Improvement Supervisor and Pre-Trial Program Director. So that was her job to do all of this Continuous Quality Improvement by herself. But now she has the new person who is Leah Baker. So Leah, wave and let us see who you are. Leah's been an adult probation officer with our department for quite a few years. And she actually started as a probation officer assistant and worked her way up to probation officer. And she's been here for a long time. So she is going to take on this new position of Evidence-Based Practices Director, our coordinator. So at this point, we're wanting to get the job description approved by the county council so that she can start this position January 1st, as it's funded by the Department of Correction, starting January 1st. And we're all available. Our team's here if you have any questions. But I want to give a big shout out. It takes a lot of, of effort to be able to work on evidence-based practices within our department. And you're seeing the leadership of that, that team right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for being here at 7:30 on a Tuesday. This is really great to see you. Counselor Deckard?
I just wanted to quickly note, the same team came to the PAC meeting and introduced themselves. We were happy to forward this with a pass recommendation for council. So it's good to see them back. And it is a 7:30 on a Tuesday. So we're grateful to see you and your service and expertise you bring to this county.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes. I was happy to hear from Ms. Brady that if something untoward would happen and we might lose these grant dollars, this would not, Ms. Baker would not lose the job. It would be, she would have more seniority and it would just work with seniority if they had to do any kind of personnel reduction. And those are things that we have to recognize, that those things could happen, that we might not be able to pick up and continue on as we might like to. And I just wanted to make sure that those people who, who had that tenure would not lose a spot because they accepted a job being paid for with grants. So I thank you for that, Ms. Brady. And you might want to send that out to everybody on the council, how that reads that you shared with us about how, how that's handled in your department.
Sure. So every, every employee who starts with the probation department, we have an acknowledgement where they sign a form where they understand that we're funded by a variety of sources, including grants and user fees. And that should we ever have to have a reduction in force, that seniority will help to dictate how, if we would ever have to lose a position, what position would be lost. It wouldn't be the person who's just, like Leah, the long, longtime employee who's in the position. It would probably be the last person who we, we hired. Fortunately, it's been, I want to say that it was about 25 years ago or more before we have, have lost a position from a grant. So it's been a very long time ago.
Wow. Are there any other questions or comments? From council? Are there any public comments? Seeing none. I'm excited to support this. So let's have a roll call vote.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Iverston?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you very much. Good evening.
Thank you. We are now at item 14 on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's Office's request to create a new account line and to simultaneously amend the 2021 and 2022 Salary Ordinance by adding Account Line 17100 Transcripts in order to correctly compensate current Monroe County employees.
Second.
Hello.
Hello, welcome.
So our first item tonight is we're requesting the personnel line for transcripts. We discovered an error that we have been paying out of Contracts 30s category for our transcripts, which are court reporters that type those. They were being sent through payroll, but they, their pay was coming out of a 30s category and not a Personnel 10 category. So we're asking for that to be put in place so we can do it right from now on.
Makes sense. Counsel Hawk, do you still have a question or is that a leftover?
Sorry.
Okay. Counsel McKem?
Thank you. This doesn't have any effect on, or any net change on FICA or PERF or anything like that, right? They were already paying FICA even when it was paid out of the, the 30s because it was being paid and run through payroll?
Yes.
I'll answer that. I, I double-checked with our payroll administrator to ensure. And he said, yes, since it was being run through payroll, it was getting the FICA and the PERF.
Okay, so this is, there's no net change in cost to us. This is just paying it through the proper line, proper category.
Correct.
Thank you.
So this is...
Are there any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment on this item? Seeing none. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverston?
Yes.
Counselor Munson is not present. Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk? Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. And then the second item, I think you have to read it first, sorry.
Yes.
I do. I got it for you. Counsel, I move to approve the Public Defender's Office's request to create new account lines and approve additional appropriations in Fund 9160-0000 System Navigator Grant in the amount of $313,148 in the personnel category, $500 in the supplies category, $1,000 in the services categories, category, and $38,3800 in the capital category, for a total of $318,448. And to simultaneously amend the 2021 and 2022 Salary Ordinance by adding Account Line 17801 Part-Time Hourly with a range of $14 to $22 hourly.
Second.
Great. Do you have some information for us on this item?
Last month, we came before council and we talked about the, the grant. And we got everything, you know, lined out. And now we're just asking for all of those lines to be appropriated.
Okay. Sounds good. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counselor Deckard?
I'll just once more say, these are dollars coming into this community in a new program with the Public Defenders to benefit the families. Great, tremendous thing. The fact that this happens in more than one department just always makes me happy to see. And I'm glad for Ms. Duffel and Mr. Hunt's work on all of this. So thank you. And the state's consideration of us for these opportunities, that's huge.
Counsel Hawk?
Yes. I was excited to hear about this grant, of course. But it is what caused me to discuss the, what would happen about a grant position in, when I was speaking with Ms. Brady. So we would just want to make sure that whoever is paid with these grant dollars, that they would understand, because I understand this grant was supposed to only last a couple of years or something of the sort. So we want to make sure that, that there's no one taking back, taking unawares, thinking that they've got long-term employment because it might not be the case. It might be the case, but we don't know. We can't guarantee it.
Right.
Because I think that's a matter of fairness.
Absolutely. I would, I would hope that all of our job positions, I guess, descriptions, the position description is something that they would be signing. That might have to say that if that's where the funding was coming from. Are there any other questions or comments? Well, I just want to echo Counselor Deckard's appreciation for your work in bringing in these, these dollars. And really excited to see how this program unfolds.
She got her first case today.
Oh, my goodness.
She's starting already.
Wow. Wow. Definitely let us know how things are going. Appreciate that. Is there any public comment? Could we have a roll call vote, please?
Madam Chair, there seems to be one public comment.
Yeah. Thank you.
Good evening again, Counsel Jim Shelton. Again, speaking as a Casa this time. I spoke at your November meeting. I just want to do it again for the public. This is a really wonderful idea. I'm so glad that the state picked Monroe County. It's obviously a testament to how we do things here. But this will be wonderful for the parents who need a lot of help at the start of the case, especially because quite often they're not functioning at their, their best level. This will supplement the regular public defender support, which is very taxed right now, well, always has been. And it will help not only the parents, but it will help the rest of the families. Quite, my last two cases, the child has been placed with the grandparents who obviously had no idea they ever needed to be prepared for such a thing. And it, it will be wonderful to help them deal with this very complicated world that they will be part of. And it'll make the cases last longer, I'm sorry, last, last long and will help have a quicker and better resolution. So just want to congratulate the Public Defender Department for getting this grant. And it'll really help the kids in the long run. Thanks.
Thank you. So any other public comments? And this time I'll try not to rush. All right. I think we are ready for a roll call vote now. Thank you.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Iverston?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Hawk?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. We are at item 15 now on our agenda.
Counsel, I move to approve the Sheriff's Request for Additional Appropriations in Fund 1000-0005 General Fund Sheriff in the amount of $94,054.05 in the personnel category and in Fund 1170-0005 Public Safety Lit Sheriff in the amount of $32,237.11 in the personnel category.
Second.
Hello, I think that Michelle is going to be speaking on behalf of the Sheriff's Department.
Yes, I got a text message from Scott McLaughlin. Sheriff Swain was called away and wouldn't be able to attend. And then Scott is training someone tonight. So he hoped to be done, but he's not on here. So I'm going to fill in for them. So what happened was council approved the 2021 budget in October. And the deputy's contract was being renegotiated during that time. And it didn't get approved until December. So this is a reflection of the increases from that contract in December. He has went through, and I've talked to him about it and looked at his budget. He's done all the in-house transfers that he can do. And this is the remaining amounts that he needs for both the general as well as the public safety lit to complete those contract amounts for this year.
Okay, thank you for that explanation. Are there any questions or comments from council? Counsel McKem?
Just, just wanted to make it clear that we were aware of the situation. We were aware that we would have to do this adjustment at the end of the year. This, these increased salaries due to the, the contract are already reflected in the 2022 budget.
Counselar Munson?
I noticed in, in the text that it refers to the Chief Deputy and Captain of Operations also having an increase. And in the, the listing above the text, those two positions are not noted. And I don't know if Michelle could determine if, if they are covered by the, what's listed above in the request for $94,000 plus.
No, he went through and did in-house transfers to cover what he could have. So this is just a portion of the people that needed transfers. This is not the entire department. So, yeah, so he went through and, and adjusted and removed what he could, so.
Very good. Thank you.
Counselor Deckard?
Thank you very much. I, the only reflection I was going to say is this does reflect, I think, the in part of this work that we did almost a year ago exactly today. And it's amazing how quick a year in county budgeting can go. If there's something you don't like about this budget, you can just wait a little longer and that, it'll come back around quickly. But it is, it also is amazing how much can happen in a year. And it's good to see that this contract has borne out, has helped, did what it was supposed to do, and we're a little bit further down the road. And it's good to see that this contract has borne out, has helped, did what it was supposed to do and we're a little bit further down the road.
Any other questions or comments from counsel? Is there any public comment on this item? I see none. So, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Now, we are on to item 16 on our agenda.
No, no.
And we are seeing a screen. So, 16A, please, Counselor Deckard.
Counsel, I move to approve the Commissioner's Request for an Additional Appropriation in Fund 1000-000-0161, General Fund Buildings, in the amount of $88,321 in the Services category.
Second.
Welcome, Commissioners.
Actually, I think I'm handling this one for the Commissioners.
Okay.
Yeah. So, this is our ASI that provides security, cleaning, and general maintenance for what we term in-house, our justice facilities. And what happened last year was we added on the EOC, the Emergency Operations Center. We added on the the Hyatt Garage under their contract. And we had not budgeted appropriately to allow for, there was an increase in salaries that we failed to budget for. So, that's why we're here at this time of the day and night requesting this additional, just to get us through the remainder of this year.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Purdy. Are there questions from counsel? Counsel Munson, is your hand raised or is that a legacy hand?
That's a legacy hand. That's my third hand.
Great. Are there any, are there any other counsel comments or questions? Seems straightforward. So, are there any public comments? I see none there. So, if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Sorry, Counselor Iverson, were you going to say something?
No, sorry, my cat was making a noise, sorry.
Okay. Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
And now we have item B, 16B.
And this is the new 16B, Madam President. So, I'm going to make an attempt on this motion. I move to amend the Township Trustee Interlocal Agreement to say, to no longer, to, from, change it from saying not to exceed $25,000 to now say to not, to not to exceed $50,000. That's my motion.
Second.
Ms. Purdy, are you able to give us a little background on this?
So, what happened was the townships reached out to, myself actually, earlier, I think this week, maybe it was last week, time flies, and requesting $25,000, which they've been asking for periodically, $25,000 increments. And when I raised it with the Board of Commissioners, the conversation was, I believe that there's, actually should be a total of $50,000 left that had been originally appropriated for, for the Township Trustees. And so, after much conversation and realization that the current agreement expires at the end of this year, anyway. And so, the, and also the fact that the townships have been extremely good at how they're, they're using this, these funding, this funding that's provided by the county. And the fact that, you know, obviously, we're not out of the pandemic yet and people are still suffering. And so, it was, the thought was that this is the easiest way for both entities is if we are able to distribute the remaining $50,000 to the Township Trustees, then they have that and they can act quickly and responsibly if they should need to. We, I don't think anybody thought or thinks that we're going to be out of this in the next six months. And it'd be, it'd be helpful for them to have this money available to them at this time. So, that's why we're presenting this amended agreement to you guys.
Okay, thank you. Are there any council comments or questions? Are there any public comments on this item? Seeing none, could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor Wilk?
Yes.
Counselor Hawke?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor McKem?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. We are now on to item 16C.
Yes, Counsel, I moved open for discussion and approval of the Commissioner's Request for an Amendment to the 2022 Salary Ordinance in Fund 1000-0068, General Fund Commissioners, to Account Lines 10300, 10400, and 11012, Commissioners, and change the annual salary from $48,886 to $67,158.
All second for the purposes of discussion.
Thank you. I see Commissioner Thomas is here and Commissioner Giffens. And it looks like we have a PowerPoint presentation.
It'll, it'll be short, trust me. We are, thank you all and thank you again for working with us on, with the Township Trustees on this Township Assistance Fund. It's meant a lot to, kept a lot of people housed and safe and comfortable. So, it's been a great thing and it's, it's great to see it continue. We are returning again, asking for your consideration. We were, to say the least, very surprised on November 30th, when our salary was posted in the packet for the counsel. And some advanced communication would have been really great. But we understand you have a long agenda tonight and, but we are in a position where we are asking you to consider, one, to just reading the motion today and, second, holding a vote on this item at your next meeting on, next week on December 21st. If we could have waited another month, believe me, we would have. We were told that the salary was approved in the 2020 budget for 2021 was, was a down payment. We have been, received acknowledgement, which is appreciated, that we are full-time employees. And Commissioner Giffens pulled this out of the WIS study relating to what makes an executive. And we thought that this fits us to a T. And there are, this is one of many components of the WIS study that deserves to be highlighted. It's evident that we are an executive and we can, but we can look at things like internal pay equity and also external pay equity. Internal pay equity, meaning other full-time elected officials. External pay equity, we can look at other counties and we can see, for example, in Vigo County with a hundred, a little over 106,000 population, the compensation to Commissioners is $10,000 higher than what is proposed here in 2022. So, and I've got some other examples here. So, this came from the WIS study as well, comparable counties. So, this is the WIS, look at comparable counties and the pay. And we thought that when we saw this in the WIS study and that we hadn't heard anything else, and we were told that December would be elected officials' time to hear, to talk about salaries, we waited. We were patient and we waited. We didn't badger you about this. But we have been asking for years for this. And what we saw in the packet, of course, was this, not executive and certainly not equitable. And that was our main concern, of course. And so, there has been gradual movement toward equity and we acknowledge it and we appreciate it. But like other elected officials, we don't do this job for money. We do it because we love Monroe County and we love to serve the people of Monroe County. But to be treated differently than other members, other elected officials is unfair. And it's, it's important to understand that while the three of us work together on, on some things, we sometimes divide the workload when we serve on boards and commissions, for example, because of interim issues and also with some bigger projects. However, as the counsel knows, when you are given a packet, when you're given contracts, when you're given things to look at, each person has to do the work themselves. It's not something that can be done as a group. And we must each be individually prepared and attend meetings as a group. And so, this is not a one-third job. And, and we have yet to hear one clear reason why our pay is one-third less than our elected official colleagues in Monroe County. We are executives and we work full-time, as the counsel has acknowledged. And we also must be available outside regular business hours. Last week, we were sent some additional information from WIS, which appears on the service to be an effort to find some sort of reason not to provide salary equity for this office. However, I think it demonstrates something more important that the counsel in this county made a fervent and solid decision to support equity and pay. Other counties are paying different positions, very different amounts. And I hope that receiving that information wasn't some sort of suggestion that the county wants to move backwards and regress to that kind of a system. So, we're hopeful that, that we're going to, to focus on pay equity. County residents and county employees expect us to be here full-time and we are. In addition to our more than full-time hours every week, we respond when there's emergency, beyond emergencies, we work weekends, we work evenings. This is not an eight-to-four job. COVID, of course, has been a real test of our office and county government as a whole. We have been dedicated to fighting annexation and we're doing it to protect county taxpayers. It will also hold county budgets in the future, but we're really doing it for our county taxpayers who may no, no longer be able to afford their homes if their taxes are increased to such an extent. Holding, we do hold other jobs, some of us, two of us, and that's left distressed and exhausted. That's not a great thing. That's a horrible thing. I don't want to have to do that. I would like to not have to work two and a half jobs. It's, it's getting wearing. And we believe that it's, you know, other county elected officials have other jobs as well and nobody ever asks them, why are you working another job? And so, we don't think it's fair to ask us that question and, or to set it as a requirement for any one group of county elected officials. Or if you want to set it for all of us, it's fine. And it's really difficult for anyone who wants to run for this particular office to be able to juggle two jobs. I have jobs that I can, I can work different hours, fortunately for me. But that's not always the case for folks. And again, we ask for one reason, to understand this discrepancy on how we're being treated. And we're asking for this pay equity on behalf of the Office of the Board of Commissioners. We're not asking as individuals. This is not about us. It's not about how you feel about us. This is about the Office of the Board of Commissioners and the respect that it's due. And I think former Mayor Mark Cuzan sent a really eloquent note to all of you about this very issue. Commissioner Giffens?
Oh, yeah, thank you. Thank you to the counsel for letting me speak tonight. I will say, I also think what brought us here tonight is a lack of communication. And so, I want to share some of my thoughts and part of them will echo what Commissioner Thomas has said. When I was recruited to run for Commissioner, I was told it was a part-time job. I thought that would be great. It would keep me active and allow me to contribute to my community while still giving me plenty of free time. I quickly learned that being a Commissioner is not a part-time job. And I think that's been acknowledged more than once by those of you on the counsel and I appreciate that. And like Commissioner Thomas said, we heard last year that the raise we were given was a down payment on getting our salary to where it should be. While that sentiment about a down payment may not have been shared by all the members of the County Council, no one raised objection to it at the time. Last year, when you all brought in Wagner Erwin Shealy, I hope I said that correctly, which we all refer to as WIS, to conduct an audit of Monroe County jobs and classifications, the Commissioners were in support of that. I'm, and I'm happy that you were able to find more than a million dollars to increase the salaries for employees and officials as WIS recommended. We too looked at the WIS study and read that WIS identified six other counties in Indiana whose Commissioners are classified as full-time. And I'm saying this for the public, not for you, because you, you all know that. We saw the average for that group, those six counties, for the Commissioner's salary was $64,463. And given that the council generally seemed to be following the WIS recommendations, we thought that average would be, would be the basis for our 2022 salary. Now, members of the County Council are regularly in touch with the Board of Commissioners. It's part of what has made this county work and worked so well through, through COVID. It's that regular communication and trust, which has allowed us to move decisively and rapidly to provide funding to keep Monroe County businesses viable and residents employed through the food and beverage tax dollars and the CARES grants that we were able to give out. We kept residents healthy through our work with the, the Health Department and other groups. We've kept residents housed through additional money that you agreed with, was needed to help Township's trustees, just like you just have done, and funds for emergency shelters. And we've kept our residents fed through this pandemic, again, because of our collaboration and the communication. It's allowed us to discuss how to move forward with criminal justice reform. And it is what is allowing us to discuss how to use the American Rescue Plan Act funding. But somewhere along the line, there was no communication about the Commissioner's salaries. Now, we understand that the council was focused on job reclassification and employee salaries. But the Assessor, Recorder, and Treasurer were given a healthy raise and money was found somehow to give the Surveyor a 61% raise. It's not our intention tonight to back you into a corner, but as you heard from Assessor Judy Sharp, the 2022 salaries for all elected officials must be finalized before the end of 2021. And had there been any indication that the WIS salary average for other full-time Commissioners would not be the basis for our 2022 salary, we would have been talking with you prior to tonight. I've read on social media, some of the objections to raising our salaries. I'm sure you have too. Folks talk about the Commissioners having other jobs, as Commissioner Thomas said. Commissioners have these other jobs so that they can meet their financial obligations, not because they enjoy working 80 hours a week. And this isn't about me. As you know, I've announced my plans to run the General Assembly. I fear that not offering a competitive salary is keeping good people, people who are not retired, who do not have the flexibility in their other job for money for Commissioner. Even before the pandemic, we heard Monroe County employees say they had never met the County Commissioner in person or seen Commissioners personally, thank them for the job they do. And in the midst of pandemic, we have had employees say that they don't think any other group of Commissioners would have helped get us through this smoothly. And recently, a resident commented to me that Commissioners Thomas, Jones, and I have taken the County Commissioner role to a whole other level. That's because of our dedication. That's because we're working full-time. So, whether new Commissioners are elected So whether new commissioners are elected next year or 10 years from now, please keep these things in mind as you consider who can afford to serve, serve the residents of our county. I've also heard some folks say, "Well, what salary would you accept?" At your meeting two weeks ago, Auditor Kathy Smith proposed an amount and a couple of council members have put forth a number, but I've not heard a definitive offer from the county council. So the salary we've requested, which again is in line with what other Monroe County elected officials receive, is too much of a bump for the county council to offer for 2022. I ask you to please tell us what adjustments you're willing to make for the next year and a timeline for bringing the commissioner's salary in line with those other elected officials. I feel like we work hard for the residents of Monroe County and we are merely seeking pay equity. At the very least, we ask that you do a first reading of this amendment tonight and take it up at your work session in two weeks. And with that, I'd like to turn the mic back over to Commissioner Thomas and I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Yeah, that's all we have to present. Thank you. Thanks for your time.
Thanks for laying out your, your case for us and for being here. We have, well, I guess I'll, I'll open it for council comment and questions at this point.
Okay.
Yes, Council Munson?
So I'll jump in and say one thing that does not trouble me, and that is the issue of classification. The, the classification grid that the council has referred to and used for most employees rather than elected officials was extended by council administration to the elected officials, not because they were being classified, but simply as an administrative aid. And I have no problem at all changing that classification. And I don't, I'm not sure that it is necessary to place elected officials within a grid system in any case. So I just wanted to offer that comment.
Thank you. Council McKen?
Thank you. And I do have a few comments here, so, so please bear with me. First of all, you know, why I'm even willing to engage in this reconsideration of the salary ordinance that we've already decided on. Number one, we really didn't have any deliberation on the commissioner's salaries. That, as the commissioners correctly pointed that out. We adopted the entire WIS plan as a package, as one vote essential, one package, and we discussed many aspects over and over, many, many meetings, over months of meetings. But we really didn't, and we even discussed some of the other elected official salaries. For example, the ones with chief deputies, we discussed their salaries because there was a need to create some distance between elected officials and chief deputies and some of the highest-paid employees in the, in the departments. But we really didn't give any, any substantial deliberation to the commissioner's salary. So I agree with that. And as Council Munson just said, we, we did tie official salaries to the existing salary grid as an administrative convenience to determine salaries. But unfortunately, it clearly sent the wrong signal as though we had actually classified various elected officials according to that grid. So, you know, in the case of the commissioners, obviously, the commissioners have an executive role and are not equivalent to a pat position. So I totally will concede and stipulate that, that the commissioners are executives. So I do think we have to recognize that mistake and scrap a system that ties elected officials to other classifications that really don't have any, any equivalency. So I think for those reasons, it, it is worth having the reopening, the discussion. You know, and now in response to the request itself, first of all, my comment last year about the $10,000 increase as a down payment keeps being brought up by the commissioners. But I stand by my statement and I ask, in what world is a down payment followed by an even bigger down payment? That is absolutely a correct use of down payment. All three commissioners knew what the salary was when they ran. Two out of three have even rerun fairly recently in the middle of the pandemic with full knowledge of both the work demands of the position and the salary. Ideally, any increase we pass would only take place after an election, allowing additional candidates to enter the race with full knowledge of the new salary. And unfortunately, for a variety of reasons, that is impossible. But that said, the broader question to me is, does Monroe County need full-time commissioners? I see arguments on both sides of this, but I do think that all the complexities of a modern county government, of an urban county like Monroe, have exceeded the old model of county government where the commissioners were mostly full-time farmers and just came, just met once a month to determine what roads get paved. We've clearly moved well beyond that in the evolution of our community, where the, where the commissioners really do have somewhat of a role equivalent to the mayor of a, of a medium-sized metropolitan area. So I, so I, you know, I'm, I'm, make the case that we do need, want, and have full-time commissioners. Now, even if we agree, though, that it's appropriate to have three full-time commissioners, which I'm not sure that we all do, that doesn't really give us much guidance on the actual salary. So we had WIS gather some data on other counties' compensation of elected officials. And maybe my colleagues can glean more of a pattern or standard than I can, but it sure seems to me that that data was all over the place. Commissioner's salaries ranged all the way from around $10,000 in Owen County. And believe me, I'm not suggesting we emulate them in any way. You know, all the way up to $79,000 in Allen, Allen County. One county, Vigo, even paid their commissioners higher than the other elected officials. Most of them paid the commissioners less by varying degrees. Hamilton County, for example, pays the commissioners only about half of what they pay their auditor and clerk. But in any case, definitely a wide variation. And then somehow there was a distinction made between those with full-time commissioners and those without. I'm not exactly sure where that distinction came from. Maybe one of my colleagues who was on some of the calls with WIS can help answer that question. But the distinction between part-time and full-time elected officials is definitely not one of law. There's no such thing as a classification of elected official as full-time or part-time. And there's also sort of a chicken and the egg thing. I mean, a commissioner position pays, commissioner position paid less because it's considered part-time or is it considered part-time because it's paid less? You can make an argument either way. And, and you know, in any case, I would have thought that based on population and degree of urbanization, Vanderburgh, Hendricks, and Delaware counties might count as well as the ones that were already thrown into the analysis. And if you put those in, the average comes down to a little over $55,000, almost $56,000, which of course is still higher than Monroe County. So, you know, when it comes down to it, I am convinced the commissioners are still underpaid, although not the, the full degree that their request would, would reflect. And then I guess one other comment, when, when one's talking about a structural adjustment to a salary, the percentage increase from the year before just isn't a very relevant number. So I'm not going to look at this as how much of an increase should we give the commissioners from last year to this year, but really, what do we think? What do I think? What does this community think for the Monroe County commissioners, what the salary should be? And so I'll end here. Sorry it took so long. And, and I know the comments were kind of all over the place, but I just, I wanted to kind of get some of those thoughts off my chest.
Thank you. Do we have other comments or questions? Yes, Council Decker?
I was doing so well and I muted myself. Thank you for your comments earlier and, and further discussion on, on your thoughts on this. I, I certainly agree with Councilor Munson. I think the, the classification with the PATD, that is a, that is an error that in the haste of doing the, all of this, that is certainly something that happened. Certainly, a lot of different perspectives have been offered on this, including what WIS has studied. I think sometimes WIS goes out in studies and they, they do figure out that counties are a little bit all over the place because counties are all over the place. And the traditions of what happens in one county and what happens in another certainly are different. Certainly in certain, certain counties, different positions are thought of differently, more competitive, who goes to the ballot box, all that stuff. And certainly how county, who county employees, you know, operate to, answer to under law and who they operate and answer to under practice can sometimes also be different. For whatever reason in this county. And I look, I, I, I went back to look at old salary ordinances today and tried to just do my research. But for whatever reason, up until about 2018, the salary ordinance for commissioners was paying in a range of about four years, between 32, 421, and 33, 918. It didn't move very much in those time periods. Today, under the proposed budget that we adopted last week, it went to 48, 886 for commissioners. That represents 2,886, more than the year before, 8,729 the year before that. Significant moves. Those old council decisions did not, didn't move that number very much. I think that we are struggling in some cases in how, how do you suddenly change something that has some history and how it's been done? And then I get into another question. Is there any other county employee that could come in here and have this discussion candidly, openly, and feel like they could to have this discussion in a council meeting? I struggle with that because I, I want to say that yes, they could. I don't think that they necessarily think that they could. And so I, I appreciate the request for us to hold this into another meeting. I certainly know that we have public here that will want to comment and to, to weigh in on this. I do not want to get lost, though, what has, has been done. Because for, and I, and I'm not saying you should be grateful for what has been done. What I'm saying is, it has been done. And for years, it doesn't appear that it was done. It was hovering in, in those areas. And trying to figure all that out, balance all that out certainly is a discussion, but I, I struggle mightily with all that.
Councilor Iverson?
Well, I certainly appreciate this discussion and I'm not sure that I have much more to add of substance than what my esteemed colleagues have already done, much more eloquently than I can hope to have done. I certainly want to echo the comments that the job classification is something that we definitely need to be looking at, something that you have raised commissioners and something that, you know, we need, we need to be looking at. I think I'm going to reserve any other further comment because I see there are quite a few hands raised and I want to hear from the public and, and what they have to say about this very important issue.
Councilor Hawke?
Yes, I, I too do not really agree with the classification that was put on there. I mean, on, that was sort of a last minute, evidently, staff was just trying to find something to put next to a certain salary because they put the county council as labor, trade, and crafts. That's so, it's, it really, we shouldn't even look at that. That's not what we're discussing at all. So that part, I want to say that I, I think that was just an error, should not have been used, I suspect, because people took that to heart and felt like it meant something other than what it did. So that, I mean, you know, maybe it should be special occupation or just an elected official, whatever, wherever you put it, but, you know, I mean, council's not labor, trade, and crafts. And, and, you know, obviously, the county commissioners' description, even at state level, is that they're the executive and legislative body. So, but regardless of that, that, I think that was just something that, that was probably just misunderstood at the way it was presented.
Councilor Decker?
Yeah, I just wanted to make one additional comment that I, I, and I apologize for not saying this the first time. When I look at the requests that was submitted to us, the level says 48, 886, but really, if we take it where it is now, it, that's really saying 46 to 67, 158. And I want to be clear, that is a dramatic, difficult amount for me. That is, that is a struggle in many different ways. And I, I don't want to be unambiguous because I know that communication has not been maybe clear as it could be from people like me, but that is a dramatic amount that I am struggling mightily with.
Was it difference 20,000? It's about 20,000, a little more than 20,000.
Yeah.
A little more.
A little more.
Are there further comments from council members? Council Munson?
Thank you. I wanted to go back to a couple of points made by my colleagues. And the first is Counselor Decker's emphasis on what has been done. And what has been done started over a year ago when, when we, well, nearly two years ago, when we said we must work on salary equity for our employees. And we began this process first with those under contract, and that's the sheriff's deputies. And I think also the highway employees. We had, the WIS study that we all agreed was very important to be conducted and it took longer than we had hoped. But in the process, we were approving a budget for 2021. And so this is fall of 2020. And as Counselor McKim so pointedly stated, the approval of $10,000 raise for the commissioners was a down payment. That is what I recognized when I voted in paper of this. And I didn't think $10,000 would be the only increase for the commissioners, but I did think it was a substantial amount. And we did not do this with the benefit of the WIS study. We did this with the understanding among us that this was a more equitable payment. And so this year, when, when many elected officials did not have a large increase in their salary, it did not seem out of order to me that the commissioner's salary was only being raised 6.3%. And, but when I look back at the $10,000 raise, what I see is a total of 65% raise. The commissioners received a portion of their raise a year earlier than other employees of the county. And I can't just move away from that and, and put that on a shelf and say, "This is not important." That is a 65% increase. Thank you.
Council McKen?
Thank you. I did just want to make one correction. I think there was a statement made earlier about the percentage increase that the surveyor saw. The surveyor's position received approximately a 21%, a little less than 21% increase. I think the, the number quoted earlier was 50%, but it was, is less, less than 21%.
Correct.
Thank you. Our auditor wanted to make a comment as well, so.
Okay, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for working so hard. Anybody who works with you guys, the commissioners and the council, knows that these jobs are actually very, very hard-working jobs. There's no question about that. And that's why we're having this discussion. So I want to thank you for that because no one sees it more than me, the secretary of both organizations. So I did want to point out that the commissioners are comparing their salary to the, to the recorder, the assessor, and the treasurer, correct? However, the assessor doesn't make $67,158 because she makes an additional $7,000 for a total of $74,158. So I think what happened is, two years ago, when the So I think what happened is two years ago, when the assessor's got a four hundred and sixty-six percent raise on, on their certification levels, which is supposed to be part of their compensation package, that kind of threw things askew, okay? So we started looking at the disparities amongst elected officials. I keep hearing that the county clerk and me, the county auditor, make more than the county assessor. That is not true. We make fifty-eight hundred dollars less. I don't know if you guys know that or not. But when you look at true compensation, we make fifty-eight hundred dollars less. And so what I think needs to happen is, I think between now and the work session, we really need to look at exactly what the compensation is for every elected official and have a chart so that when you guys talk about this next time, you can talk apples to apples. Because the commissioners, obviously, the last two years of COVID, it has been a tremendous strain on what they've had to do. No one sees it more than me with ARPA and, and with the other COVID money. I have spoken more with Angie and the commissioners in one year than I did the previous four years out of together. And I'm not saying that so that, that you, because I don't set salaries, you guys set salaries. Only thing I want to make sure of is that you know exactly who is getting what. Does that make sense? Who is getting what? Before you kind of make any changes in picks moving forward. So I would like to present something to you between like tomorrow or the next day so that we can say this is total compensation, so that you guys can think about it before the work session. And, and any questions that you could have, you could write those questions to me, Bree Gregory or Kim, and we could try to get answers for you. So I want to make sure that, that we are not digging holes for more, you know, stepping in it to break your ankle, that we're actually, we're actually leveling everything off and leveling the playing field so that, so that what might be justified, you guys might say, oh, well, I understand now. Right? Or now it raises these questions. I just, I just want to make sure that every elected official is treated in the same mechanism and with the same empathy and heartfelt concern that we give our other, other employees. We've been very gracious, you guys have been very gracious this year to employees. The employees appreciate that very much. And I want to make sure that, that you guys understand, moving forward, that we're all in this together. So I was with a Kentucky county commissioner two days ago, right after, right after the tornado. And I can tell you that, matter of fact, I can give you information about him. The, the work that he did, the work that he has started now because of this disaster is, is crazy. It's just, I mean, crazy. We will not call the county council at the middle of the night if there's a disaster. So that's one thing I want to point out. But moving forward, if you guys would like just, between now and in this next week, this, or the end of this week, ask any questions you could have, but I would like a chart of total compensation for all elected officials, everyone, so that you can see, you know, and even put the judges on there so you can see what every single person makes. And it, and have your eyes wide open when you meet again. How does that sound?
I, I personally think having as much information as we can as we proceed on these topics is really important. So I appreciate that. Are there other council comments before I move to public comment? It looks like we have five people in line at this point. I just wanted to remind everyone that public comment is three minutes. And there'll be a timer and a tone is played when you have thirty seconds remaining. All right, so Ms. Barrow, welcome.
Welcome. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to say this. I have never seen commissioners work as hard as what these three have. You gotta look back into two thousand fifteen, sixteen, whenever we were trying to join the district. They were all on board then. They worked so many hours with me, making sure that I dotted all my i's and crossed all my t's on this. Now, let's go forward a little further. Let's go to what we're, we're all facing right now, annexation. I have never seen anybody work so hard as they are. And I'm going to tell you this, the individuals that have started taking the counterparts are very appreciative of them. They have been to our meetings. They have explained to the city council, whenever they were voting, what this was going to mean to us. Many, many of the residents have looked at me and said, this isn't a political thing. I said, no, it's not. This is straightforward and I commend them. I really don't know what I'd done, what I would have done without them. I could go on and on about this, but as far as their classification, that was almost a smack in the face when I heard that. And I, I, like you said, it was an oversight and I'm happy to hear you say that you will change that classification. And I also need to say that these individuals deserve a raise. I'm, I'm not in any way saying that they need a fifty thousand dollar raise or a ten thousand dollar raise. What I'm saying is they deserve what other elected officials receive. So I'm, I'm gonna let it go. I'm just saying that you guys really don't understand as well as I don't understand the council, how much the county council's time is input into this. So I appreciate all of you. I appreciate the commissioners for what they've done in helping us with anything that we have coming forward. And I thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Ms. Barrow. Next, my next speaker, it looks like, is Dee Allen.
Hello there. Am I there? Excellent. Very good. Well, it's nice to see everybody and thank you for giving me my three minutes here. I was reading the, the B-square bulletin and I felt compelled actually to, to come to this meeting tonight, even though I had another one. And that is because I have worked with our current commissioners for some time. I was a contractor last year and, and some before that, I guess. And I can honestly tell you, I've never felt more supported. If I needed anything, a commissioner would come help. Julie was at, at every meeting that I had with Kathy and with her staff. It really was professional, helpful, prompt. If, if we needed anything, we got it done. And it didn't matter what time of day or night it was. I, I read the part about the commissioners being full-time employees and I thought, no, they're not full-time employees. They work twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five. That is not a full-time employee. I'm sorry. That, that is an all-time employee. That's more than full-time. And so I think that, you know, I heard Counselor Decker talking about, you know, looking through had the past and, and, you know, trying to correct past errors. And sometimes you don't want to do that all in one big chunk, but perhaps you want to do it incrementally. But it seems to me that you already have job classifications that the commissioners ought well to be paid the same as other elected officials that perhaps have full-time jobs but don't even have to do as much work as the commissioner does. So I think that executives should be paid at the same rate irrespective of who's in the office, even if it's people I know or I don't know. We're going to attract better people, I think, to run even better people. The ones we got are great, but you know, people come and go. And so we have to think about it. And you all in the council, you, as well as anybody, knows how hard you work and you know how hard the commissioners work. And then take COVID and double it. So thank you for listening. I just wanted to commit and give you a couple of cents worth anyway. Thanks.
Thank you. Next we have Margaret Clemmons.
Good evening, councilors. It's nice to see you and thanks for hearing me. I would like to urge you to pass the pay equity request of our three county commissioners. Just as the needs of the county and the protection of the county have become more complex, so have the demands on our commissioners. We have placed strong demands on all three of our commissioners for public safety, planning, health, justice, economic development and environment such that they are needed to perform, as you have stated, at an executive like level. Lucky for us, the three incumbent commissioners have been doing so without equitable compensation relative to the demands of their duties for quite some time. It is really not just. Monroe County has asserted time and again, and even have passed ordinances related to this, that it is concerned with matters of diversity, equity and social justice. If that is true, you must compensate the county commissioners at a just level that reflects the executive and professional demands placed on them as they oversee our county. It is not lost on we women leaders in the community that all three of the incumbent commissioners are female. And as Councilmember Deckard said, asked, how do you change something that has always been done? It is really a structural adjustment that is needed and it is about time that we make that structural adjustment. And it must be done in a relative comparison to the pay of the commissioners and other high-performing counties and such that I would compare our county to Allen County. I think the just pay for the three commissioners would be upwards of seventy-nine thousand dollars a year. I think that our aspirations as a community, the complexity of our community, the demands for our social integration and our social structure and our stewardship of the environment are such that, you know, I would think that seventy-nine thousand dollars would be not even fair, but compared to all the other commissioners in the counties that were put up on the comparable table. I think that, and then that's the strongest argument we could make. Yet they're only asking for sixty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-eight dollars a year. And while it is an increase compared to what they currently are earning, it's a bargain. We need to professionalize this county. There's so much opportunity, so much latent opportunity that we're ready to grasp. We need the full-time attention of these people who hold this position. Lucky for us, it happens to be Julie Thomas, Penny Githens and Lee Jones. But whoever holds that position, we have things for them to do. And we should pay them at a rate that allows them to get it done professionally. So I argue for their increase and I, I thank them for their service and you.
Thank you, Ms. Clemmons. Next we have Cindy Chavez.
Hello, how are you? I hope you can hear me.
Welcome.
I just came forward today. I am the director of pantry two, seven, nine. I've been at this since two thousand fifteen when we opened and we quickly grew, as you all know, to serving about thirty-five hundred people a month. COVID hit, it went up to six thousand, eight thousand a month. And we do this all on local donations. I did not even know who my county commissioners were. I had no idea what they did. I knew nothing of politics. And Penny contacted me shortly after COVID and was like, hi, I'm Penny, I'm county commissioner. How can I help you? I have not had a politician come to me or really any big person come to me and ask, how can I help you? We were struggling to feed all these people when other food pantries were closing and were limiting their hours. And she came forth, she not only got me money from the county, but better than that, her and the county commissioners showed up and actually helped out by volunteering when other people wouldn't because they were afraid of catching COVID. During the Thanksgiving time when we fed, it was like nineteen thousand people last year in two days, the county commissioner showed up in the cold, in the rain and helped me hand out all the Thanksgiving boxes. They did the same thing this year and we were at about thirteen thousand people in two days. And now they've even taken on helping me with the elf dispatch, taking care of fifteen hundred kids who need presents. They have gone up and above from what I can see from other county commissioners when I did some research to find out exactly what a county commissioner does. And I've been really, really impressed. So I went ahead and came forward today, took some time out of the pantry, just to say, they are, I agree, they're beyond full-time employees. And we could not have stayed open or kept this county and a few other counties fed, I don't think, without their help. And that's all. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Our next speaker is Reverend Forrest Goldmore.
Hi, everyone. There's obviously a lot of different opinions here and thoughts. And to be honest, I work with a lot of you in, in various ways and I believe in you and I trust you. And I know that there are going to be many different thoughts about this. And there are many details that are way beyond my ability to know what you're all working with. So I acknowledge that. That said, if we, if we consider the commissioners, the three roles full-time, they're way underpaid and, and I think we need to take that seriously. And I, I'm grateful for what you've done in the past and, and the current level is, is really, really low for the level of work that they do and the responsibility that they have. And, and so I just want to keep going. I really, again, appreciate what you did last year and, and I, I view that as a, as a beginning. And I'd love to, again, just encourage you to keep going. There's not much more for me to say. It's just, that's, that's where I kind of think things are with their, their salaries. And I know there are many complications to raising salaries and, and I know that you're all thoughtful, decent, good, good people that are trying to figure out all those complications. So, so I honor your decisions, but just want to put in my word there for, for raising their salaries. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Many more members of the public who wish to speak. Yes, Sarah Wyder. Hi, Sarah.
Hi. I, I guess I would like to echo what we just heard. I looked at, at least as of two thousand twenty, what the cities mayor and deputy mayor were paid together. And combined in two thousand twenty, that was two hundred thirty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-two dollars. When I, if I divided that three ways, that would come to seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars. The executives for this county are doing at least, if not way more than the city's mayor and deputy mayor combined. They've had so many trials. They show up, which hasn't always been the truth for commissioners in the past, but they show up at meetings, they're prepared, they know what's going on, they are active participants as well as genuine executives in this community. They are caring for all of the county's personnel and citizenry, which includes the city of Bloomington. So I certainly believe that they are well overdue for a reasonable hike in their salaries and at least seventy-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars should have been paid back in two thousand twenty. So I would encourage our council members to see their way clear to raising the salaries for our commissioners for the amazing work that they do. Thank you.
Thank you. Looking to see if there are any more people who wish to speak. Okay, it's looking like we have no more hands raised. We had read the motion and as a first reading. So it was open for discussion. And am I correct in assuming then we are not taking a vote tonight? I just want to make sure I don't mess up the procedures.
Yeah, procedurally, the motion on the floor is by Jeff McKim was for discussion only.
Actually Trent, sorry, Councilor Deckard made the, made the motion. I just seconded.
Okay, seconded, sorry. Yep, sorry.
Okay, so I'd like to just check back in with counselors to see if there's any, anyone who has any further comment. Before we close out this item. I did have just, oh, Councilor Hock.
Yes, as I've mentioned to you and to council staff, et cetera, I will not be at that next meeting when I, my daughter's flying in. And I said, when, when I knew that date, that, that I wouldn't be attending the, the meetings while she's here. I don't want anybody to think I'm trying to avoid this discussion. But I, this first time she's come for Christmas in 10 years. And I'm not going to spend that precious time with my daughter in another council meeting. We should, we should have had this discussion ages ago. Not right now. Sorry. I love county government, but not that much.
Not that much. Completely appreciate that and understand you have an excused absence coming your way. And it is required that we have a, another reading of this, I guess. So we will take that up in our work session next Tuesday. And, you know, I did, I did want to, to say that, that to the point that several have made of we've not communicated well about this and should have been talking about it earlier. I feel, I, I, I agree. And I'm sorry that we haven't addressed that better with our commissioner colleagues. I really also though feel that I need to not rush this decision at this point. So we will, we'll think about things for a week. And hopefully some of the new information that we get will help us think things through. I am, I will say I'm committed to a lot of what the WIS recommendations were, including looking at, I mean, to me, this was not a closed book on the WIS study. We still had several things that we wanted to take a look at, including appropriate longevity compensation across the county positions, which I know is not super popular topic, but here I am, I'm saying it. I'm, I think we need to take a look at it. I also, personally, I, I, you know, apologize for any offense on the grid classifications. I was not anticipating that those were as meaningful to the elected officials as, as they were. And they were an administrative means to, to get at the compensation levels we were looking for. So I would like to, to scrap those classifications and take a new look and see, do we need classifications? How do we do this? Is there a grid system that makes sense for elected officials? Is there some other system that we need to be looking at? But I think when we talk about these things, we need to be considering best practices among our, our peer counties and, and other counties even. What, you know, when we take a look at how their elected officials are, are compensated and what benefits are offered. We, you know, I'd like to see what, what logic goes into those decisions, not just what are those levels. And all of this might lead to some salary adjustments in the future. I certainly wasn't looking at this salary ordinance as the end all be all, that it seems to have sort of been interpreted as. And I was hoping that we would be taking a closer look at these salaries for elected officials in the coming months, specifically for the commissioners. And really hoping that we could do this in next year. You can't raise elected official salaries in the same year. So by pushing it down after this month, I recognize what we're talking about then is not, you know, waiting till 2023 for any implementation. But I, I currently feel like I need more information. And I, you know, I'm not entirely confident I'll have it in the next week. I hope that we, I hope we can figure something out. Because although I really feel like, I can appreciate the desire to have our executive positions paid on par with other counties, other municipalities. I feel that our county commissioners do work harder than most people I know at their jobs. And I, you know, unfortunately, the guidance that I feel we need to follow is looking at, what is the position? What does it need to, you know, in terms of compensation? And that, you know, that makes it difficult because I do appreciate the hard work that you all do. But right now, we haven't outlined a good system for determining which entities, external or internal, are the best comparisons. So I think we have a lot of thinking to do. When we contracted with WIS, the council was looking at staff. We weren't looking at elected officials. It was not on the list of objectives for the WIS study. And the small table that keeps coming up was something that came up during the study and was asked for by the commissioners, for the commissioners. It's useful information, but to me, it's just a start. You know, we have 17 comparison counties, yet other municipalities that we, that were included in, in the comparison. And I think we need to, to look at, look at how, how these decisions are made as, as much as what the outcome is. So that said, I'll stop rambling because I know it's been long and we will continue the conversation. Councilor McKim, did you want to say something?
Yes, I'm sorry. And very well, very well spoken, Councilmember Wiltz. No, I just wanted to clarify the procedure. And this is a question, I guess, for Ms. Rice as much as anything. Is it, is it, your understanding, Ms. Rice, that our next meeting, we can do the second reading of, of this ordinance and vote on it as well as amend it?
Yes. So there's a statute, yes, I agree with you. So the statute in Indiana says that unanimous, unanimous consent of the members present is required for an ordinance, a salary ordinance like this to pass on the first night in which it's introduced. So you're not voting tonight, it's introduced tonight. At the next meeting, because you already introduced it tonight, you can vote on it. And if there is majority support, it would pass.
But it could also be amended.
Yes. Yes. So it's, yes. So what's been introduced tonight will be there for a second reading next week. And that could be amended if there, if a member wanted to vote or put a motion on the floor to amend it. Yes.
Okay. So just since we're talking about communication here, I'll just be transparent that I will be bringing in amendment to the next meeting. I don't know what that number is going to be. It will be higher than the existing. I've already made it clear that I believe the commissioners are, the commissioner position is under, undercompensated. It will reflect that, but it will be less than what was requested here. It may not get a second. Some of you may have your own amendments you want to bring. I just wanted to be transparent that that's what I plan to do.
Councilor Hock?
Yes. And this was read, was it read into as the first reading? I thought it was just like, you know, how was that motion put together? I thought it was just for discussion.
No, it was.
You intend that this would be the first reading. I think it needs to be official. But I mean, I don't know why I care. I'm not going to be here at the next meeting. It's after you guys fight it out.
Counsel, I move to, to clarify that this read, the reading today, the, the discussion we did had constitutes the first reading of the proposed ordinance.
I'll second.
Thank you. I think that's important. I had, I had questions about that myself.
We don't, we don't have to vote on whether or not we think this is the first reading or not. There's no vote on the first reading.
I believe you're correct.
The commissioners do want to thank you for your consideration. We know you've got a lot going on. It's the end of the year, but it's the end of the year. So that's why we're here. But we do appreciate your consideration and your time tonight. And we're here if you have any questions in the next week.
Thank you.
And just for the record, Indiana case law makes very clear that boards and commissions like county council, any boards and commissions speak through their minutes. So if, for the record, if there's anybody who disagrees that this is a first reading, I think this qualifies as first reading, this motion was made. There's a disagreement about that. Let's talk through that right now. But I believe that this qualifies legally as a first reading. It seems to be the council's intent that it's a first reading. So the next meeting would be a second reading and just would require majority. But if there's, you have questions about that, please, please let me know.
Thank you. Okay, thanks commissioners for being here. And we will see you next week. And I believe we still have agenda item number 17.
We do. Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval. Resolution 2021-65, 2022 county council meeting schedules.
Oh, that's dangerous. That's a danger.
Second, Marty.
New form of seconding. Michelle, could you speak to our schedules? I believe we heard from, we saw the draft last week, or last meeting.
Yes, I presented to you some options with regards to how you wanted to handle your schedule for 2022. It came down to with regards to your November and December dates. So I presented a calendar A, which has you meeting in December. And I can't remember that off the top of my head. I'm meeting in December, on December the 13th, as well as December the 20th, which would be just like now, it's back to back meetings. But then a counsel, or sorry, sorry about that. Auditor Smith proposed having the meeting, since we're with cancelling the PAC meeting on the December meeting and having the regular session on December the 6th and still having the work session on December the 20th. The only thing about December the 6th is that your November work session is on the 29th, which is you would have back to back meetings then. So you would have a work session, November work session with a December regular session back to back. So it's just basically which do you choose to have back to back meetings? You want to have back to back November to December, or do you want to have back to back in December?
And miss, and miss Thanksgiving week. Say and miss Thanksgiving week.
Yeah, which, you know, if you go with the, the, the December or the November day work session, that just skips your Thanksgiving week. So that's the only reason we moved it to that is in order to avoid the Thanksgiving holiday.
Okay, Counselor Iverson.
It, it seems like having a meeting on the, on December 20th would be problematic for a number of us. And maybe a meeting earlier in December would be more desirable. I think on the calendar, what is this, calendar A, we have a meeting on December the 13th. That seems more preferable to me.
Well, your, the, the December 20th meeting would be your work session. So are you suggesting having a regular session on the 6th and then a work session on the 13th?
There'd be three back to back.
And then that would mean you would have three back to back meetings in November, like with the November 29th being the work session.
Counselor Hock?
What day is Thanksgiving?
Thanksgiving is, one moment. It is the week of the, it's the 24th and the 25th is the hot scheduled holiday.
So the, the meeting should, there's five Tuesdays in November. And if we went with the second and the fourth, the fourth work session would be on the 22nd, which is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving. Traditionally, schools are out sometimes on that Wednesday. If you guys want to meet on the 22nd, just like normal, that is fine. And then, then the next, then we could meet on the 6th. And if you wanted to meet on the 13th or whatever that date is, I think it's 13, you could have back to backs in December and be done with it. If you want two meetings in December, you don't have to have two meetings in December. The only reason we're pushed this much towards the end of the year this year is because of the WIS study. We won't be going through this next year, this late in the year.
Knock on wood.
Never know.
I can't imagine. With the faint hope, possibility that we might be able to cancel a second meeting in December, maybe we should then go with the early in 20th.
And then. That's what I was thinking.
Insulating the 20th, we won't have any back to backs. We don't know that we'll cancel it. We might have to. But I also, I'm, I'm ambivalent. I'm just trying to think through some.
Okay, I agree.
We have canceled work sessions before. So I mean, if you want to go with the, having the.
Second and fourth and.
The second and fourth, you know, so like November, the 22nd.
Skip the 29th and go for the sixth.
For the sixth is your regular session.
And then, and then propose the 20th. If you don't need it, cancel it on the 6th.
Thoughts?
Sounds rational.
Yes, totally up to you guys, so.
Now let's just do something, whatever, even if it's wrong, I'm leaving.
Thank you, yes.
Go with it.
At your house. Your house. You want to propose that?
Yes. Do we have to amend something?
Well, I, somebody needs to do, you know, I mean, I proposed, uh, the two calendars. So if you're wanting to change dates, I need to know that, so.
Um, I don't remember which thing to propose. I'm not looking at the two in front of me. I'm just sorry. I didn't get to that page. I can, I only have so much window space here. Um, but I, I would like to go with the, the December 20th and then this, and 6th and 20th.
I agree with Kate.
So can we consider that sort of a motion in a second?
Yes, let's, uh, have roll call on that. Can we just leave? Let's.
We've got more.
Yeah.
There's a lot more on this agenda.
I'm done.
Yeah, I, I know. I, I think we're all mentally there with you. Um, so is, if Kim, if that's understandable, give me a nod. Okay, uh, could we please have, uh, wait, is there public comment on our calendar?
No.
Okay, could we please have a roll call vote?
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Huck?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
We're gonna do the second and the fourth. Skip the 29th and do the sixth.
Okay, can I have a clarification real quick? I'm sorry about that. We're going with the 6th and the 20th, but did we, were we planning on moving the, um, the work session in November to the, to the 4th or we were gonna, or we're, which was the 23rd or were we going to go with the 30th?
23rd.
Oh, I'm, I'm not the 30th, the 29th, sorry. I'm on the wrong month.
Do you want to meet the week of Thanksgiving or do you want to meet the following week for the work session?
Right.
Does anyone have strong feelings? My thought was that we were doing the 23rd.
20, 22nd.
Second, week of Thanksgiving. I don't go anywhere for Thanksgiving, so this is fine with me.
Let's do it. We can change it later, right?
My only strong feeling is we wrap this up.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, so, okay.
Already then, um, I mean, nowhere the agenda went at this point. Sorry, um, the next item.
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval, an amendment to the 2022 salary ordinance section. Disclaimer regarding grant or user fee compensation language, which reads as, this is disclaimer regarding grant or user fee compensation. It is the intention of the council to maintain the integrity of the job classification system and hierarchy, including compensation for all positions, even grant and or user fee funded positions, any grant user fee funded compensation for which the grant or funding does not provide a budget sufficient enough to cover the county's required compensation will either be reduced by the county council to match the grant user fee funded budget, adjusted or supplemented by the county council using an alternative fund in order to raise the salary to the necessary level. Employees paid in full or in part by grants or user fees will be notified by employee services and shall acknowledge in a written statement, which is signed by the employer and supervisor, that funding for positions could be withdrawn and or discontinued in the future for whatever reason and that a reduction of staff could become necessary. Should such a reduction of staff become necessary, seniority will be considered as a factor in determining such reductions.
Second.
I'm just, uh, introducing this. We can, uh, sit as a first reading and we can put it off until the work session, if that's what you so choose.
We just read it.
That sounds fine. So let's put it off till the work session. Any problems with that? No, fantastic. Could we move to the next?
Counsel, I move to open for discussion and approval to change the reporting structure with the council administrator.
Second for first reading, right?
Yep, first reading.
That's my understanding.
Okay, thank you.
Let the minute show.
Is it gonna be just to?
They're just gonna move it 10 next week, so this is the first reading, so.
Does it need two readings?
That it?
Are we done?
Well, I'm not sure what the, I think that do we want to move, can we move this last item to next week? Is that?
Absolutely.
Yes, the prosecutor one?
Oh gosh, there's more.
That's I, that's the add on item D that we added on.
That's not. Now.
I was referring to item C.
Oh, or you can vote on it now if you want to.
Or you can table it.
It doesn't need two readings, right?
No.
It doesn't need two readings.
This doesn't need two readings. This is just a, a change of reporting structure.
Right. But it has to be approved um, prior to the end of the year.
No, no, okay.
All right. You guys are, you guys will, if you make the change, it will be changed in the job description to reflect that Kim's position is being supervised by the auditor. So it doesn't require two readings. You can put on it tonight or you can put it off till next week.
Well, if you're ready to vote for it, I think let's call a question.
Do we have any council comment besides that one? Okay, do we have any public comment on the issue? Could we please have a roll call vote on item 17C?
Everything is on the computer, is on TV.
Counselor Munson?
Yes.
Counselor Huck?
Yes.
Counselor Deckard?
Yes.
Counselor McKim?
Yes.
Counselor Wiltz?
Yes.
Counselor Iverson?
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Would, let's go do item D. Should be relatively quick.
Counsel, I move to simultaneously in the 2021 or 22, 2022 salary ordinance and amendment to add account line 13425, DPA felony sex crime specialist, 35 hours, EXE to SO attorney be exempt.
Second.
Do this as a first reading and take it up at the work session since it is the salary ordinance amendment.
Okay, do we have any council comment? We will take that up later then. Do we have any public comment? No, okay, we will talk about it at the next meeting. So now we are on to item 18, which is approval of the minutes. Counsel, we have three sets of minutes. November 9th, 2021 regular session, November 17th, 2021 joint special session with the commissioners and November 30th, 2021 work session. Do we have any council members who would like to change, modify, edit any of these minutes? Blowing ones. Okay, seeing none, the minutes are accepted as presented. That brings us to council comments. Does anyone have any comments unrelated to ending this meeting as soon as possible?
I'm hungry.
I had some great wisdom to convey, but given your no, I'm kidding. I did, I did not, I did not.
Sorry.
Whoever isn't getting it, I'm.
Are there any council comments, though, that brave enough to share? Okay, um, then.
See you until next year. Merry Christmas.
Happy New Year.
And happy new year and, um, the meeting is adjourned for us.
Thank you.